2022 Meeting of the Milton Select Board, beginning at nine o'clock in the Milton Town Hall's Cronin Conference Room for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of Town Administrator. We are very fortunate to have three candidates to interview this morning. And in preparation for that process, the Select Board will review the interview protocols and questions and decide upon the questions that have been submitted as to which ones will be presented to the candidates during the interview process. With that said, may I entertain any comments initially on the questions that have been received? We have 16, and we can probably win those down to 10 to 12 for the candidates.
I had a quick question. I was wondering if, in one of the questions that we have, if we can incorporate something about strong Town Administrator and what their, something to the effect of what their impression is of what that would involve and something related to strong Town Administrator into one of the questions that we choose.
That would seem totally appropriate, considering that is indeed the fact in the town of Milton, and it may be something that could be easily incorporated into one of the questions that we call for inclusion in the interview process, if that makes sense to all of you.
Okay.
Mr. Zulus, as I see it, any opening comments that you would like to make with respect to questions?
Sure, just very generally, I think 16 is a little high, so to the extent we can narrow that down. And as someone suggested, maybe we can collapse some into one, but that's just my overall impression.
I concur, strong, I concur. Just, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
Just for the point of, so I'm willing to, I've already had one chance, as Mr. Zulus has, so I'm, we did do 12 questions in the preliminary, which was a lot. 12 is a lot, so I think something around 10 is going to take you close to an hour per candidate, especially with follow-up. We kind of limited follow-up because we had so many candidates in the prelim, but this year, I think, with all of us here, there may be follow-up. So I think 10 with follow-up is probably a good idea. And I do like Roxanne's idea about, it is the strong Town Administrator, that's what we're hiring. And as Anne Marie knows, we've talked about this a lot, I think we want to hear their thoughts on it, you know, just.
Thank you, very helpful. And are there any questions that we would like to move off the list? That would probably be an easier way than...
There's a bunch, Mr. Chair, there's a bunch about incorporating the community into discussion and fostering community engagement. I'm looking, right now I can see, there's kind of three of them. It would be number 13 in the front here. 13 and two, at least for now, that I can see, skimming quickly, are the same. And then there's 12 and 15 are kind of the same. Those are both about the five-year plan.
Get rid of either one of them, I'm fine with that. You want to get rid of both of them?
No, I want to combine them.
No, I think we need, yeah, we have to combine that.
Oh, I'm just talking about combining.
Yeah, yeah, we should combine that.
Okay, so the first recommendation is combining 2 and 14?
2 and 13.
15, that's correct. What about, okay, projects 2 and 14. Thank you.
So we could just take out number 13? Would be, because I just looked and the words are almost identical. And then 12 and 15 both have to do with the five-year plan. Thoughts and visions about a five-year strategic financial plan. So explain your process. Thoughts and visions. I mean, all we have to do is add two more words to that, number 12. And then you've got the same question, and you can get rid of 15.
Yes, just to make sure that we have this clear. On your two recommendations, we are eliminating number 13?
Correct.
And the next recommendation?
Is to add thoughts and visions to question number 12 after process. And then my next recommendation is to get rid of number 15.
Is that agreeable to everyone?
That's fine.
That seems fine.
Mr. Chair, I think, oh, go ahead, Erin.
Nope, I'm done.
I think to Roxanne's point on question one, you could please describe the role and unique duties for a strong Town Administrator.
Right.
Strong Town Administrator.
You?
And I will say, just if I may, one is mine, and it's a little bit different than I think what Roxanne was driving at. We could just say strong Town Administrator there, but I think, I think if we may say something in there about, or have something separate about, you know, given the statutory requirements of the Town Administrator for Milton, can you tell me how your vision was?
Right.
Something like that. It's really a different question than two, than one. One was really, was addressing the changing needs of a town.
Right.
And so, so we didn't combine them, but I think it's...
I agree with Mr. Zulus, yeah.
That sounds like a good idea. Do you want to rephrase that, so we can write that one down? I thought you had a great...
Oh, so, what did I say?
It was good.
It was good.
Hold on, can you roll back the tape?
Given the statutory duties of the Milton, the unique statutory duties of the Milton Town Administrator, how do you view, how do you view the role, I guess I said something like, how do you view the role, or something like that? Given the unique statutory duties of the Milton Town Administrator?
In the midst of changing needs such as housing, infrastructure, demographic makeup? Or you want to add more to that?
I think just make it simple.
All right, so keep it as a question, just like that?
I think keep it open as well.
I think keep it open, so that they can tell us what their impression is.
Oh, am I not? Can you hear me? Am I live?
You're alive. I think it should be a separate, or...
I think it should be a separate, yeah.
Because this is, Mr. Zulus's question is really specific, and I actually really like that question, so. Roxanne, do you have any suggestion for adding your strong Town Administrator piece? Or is that what we just did with Mike?
I think doing it as a separate question, because it's a little bit more open-ended, and we can see what they say to that, the candidates, versus sort of giving them sort of structure. I want to see what they say about that.
So did you want to formulate a separate question altogether, Roxanne?
I think we should. Mr. Zulus had a great ques...
Yeah, he just did it. Did anybody write it down?
So maybe, go ahead, Roxanne.
I was just saying, you said something like, given the unique statutory duties of Milton Town Administrator, how do you view that role, or something, elaborate on it, or something?
Maybe if we want to make it open-ended, we can say, what is your perspective on the unique statutory duties of the Milton Town Administrator?
Anne Marie, were they going in there?
Okay, where do we want to position that question? Well, it depends upon who's going to be asking the questions. Roxanne, that's your question to ask.
I think it should be up top. I think it should be after one, or?
Probably after one, or before one, either or.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you want to start that as the first question? Is that what you're saying?
Whatever you all decide.
It's a great way. And then a nice follow-up is number one.
Number one, yeah.
So question eight, Mr. Chair? Question eight and question 16 are of a similar topic?
Yes, I was just doing it.
They were a similar topic?
And would...
More operational, how you're going to operate?
Right.
Maybe merge them into one, I'm fine with that, however you want to do it.
Yeah, I agree. Number eight was mine, so I agree with that. And can we look at five in that whole? I think five, eight, and 16 are very close.
Make them one question?
I'm trying to. I should have done this last night, sorry, guys. Actually, five is a little different.
So 16 is mine. I'm okay with eliminating 16 and maybe merging five and eight as a two-part, like a two, like part A. We had a lot of, we had several part A and part B questions.
So 16 is off the agenda?
Yeah, take 16 out and merge, make five and eight, combine them, A and B.
So recruiting and retaining new staff? And what concrete steps would the current department heads break down the silos?
Yep.
Okay. So eight was mine, so I'd be happy to merge those and ask, so.
So Erin, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'll take eight. And we'll get rid of five. So it'll be what concrete and actual steps would you take to break down the silos within town departments? Including, and create a leadership plan for the town to work towards input from all department heads working together, including recruiting and retaining key staff?
That's good, just there. Period, that's good, right there. What are we down to now, Mr. Chair?
So we've eliminated four, so we're down to 12.
But we added one, so we're 13.
Nice job.
Good math, Mike?
What did we do with question four? Did we do anything with question? Did you merge question four with another question?
No.
But one clarification on eight? Do you want to ask about their role in recruiting and retaining staff as well as the role of the department heads in recruiting?
Sure, in retaining?
And retaining staff? It's a sort of a dual functionality.
Your role.
So given that, just trying to wean this down, question four is kind of covered in that.
Yes.
I would think so.
Silos and resistance, it's the same. I think we're going to eliminate question four, Mr. Chair.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, that should be done with one of the other questions.
It is, it is, yeah.
And even the community engagement piece, if that's what that question was about. I mean, there's other questions that ask that, so.
So are we down to 12?
We're down to 12.
What do we think about leaving it at 12? I mean, we can look at this more, but...
Three, 12.
I don't know, I think we should get down to... Are we going to leave them?
12, you may potentially go over the hour.
Yeah.
With 12 before, we're going over the hour.
Okay.
Are they allowed to ask questions? Is this one of those things where at the end, we're going to say, you can ask your own questions?
Yes, and they will.
So we need to really bring these down?
So 11 and 12, 12 talks about day-to-day budgeting. So 11 is a little more developed than that, but the essential question is what process would you use when developing? I wonder if we can combine 11 and 12?
Do it.
So explain the process, thoughts and visions you would use when developing a five-year?
Did you want to say, in that respect, Mike, developing the annual budget in conjunction with a five-year?
No, I think, I think we need to hear on the five-year on this. I do, I think, I want, I mean, I think there are other questions are going to, they're going to be able to articulate their annual budgets, how they do budgets. Five-year is something that we need to hear about. I think it's its own thing.
Bring it right out.
Yep.
So why don't we just keep 11 and say, what process would you use when developing a five-year financial plan as well as day-to-day budgeting? Just add that to the end of 11.
Do it.
That's a good...
Okay.
So I'm making that A and B.
Developing, developing the five-year...
Then now we're down to 11 questions?
Budget.
What would you think of combining six and seven?
You could just add, sorry, Richard.
Go ahead, Erin, no, go ahead.
You could just add at the end of that sentence,
Should, is that number?
Six, and addressing such instances for opportunities for a community that present themselves. I don't know, that's kind of clunky.
Maybe it's too awkward to do?
Well, could you say, how do you advise anticipating, identifying, planning for, and addressing such instances, including identifying and pursuing outside opportunities, beneficial opportunities for a community? Was one of the questions, was like grant opportunities, or just generally?
Yeah, I don't know.
Be interesting to see what they say.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you could do that. It seems like it would make sense to do that.
So we'll just add the phrase to number six of including beneficial opportunities for a community?
Right.
Good, all right, we're down to 10. We met our goal.
My favorite question's left out, I didn't even include it, Anne Marie.
What's your favorite question?
My favorite question to ask in an interview is, if you are an animal, what animal would you be? And it allows the person to actually think, and they are so caught off-guard, and you actually get to see how they are in a personable way that's not so formal.
I'd really need to go to my animal cracker box.
That's right. Most people say, you know, a penguin or a bird. I mean, I've asked this question of dozens and dozens of people.
What I was thinking is that since Richard and Mike have both had an opportunity to ask a series of questions during the screening process as to whether we might start in our reverse roll call. And Roxanne, the first question, and then alternate from Roxanne to Erin?
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Mike, Richard, Arthur, go in that process.
Yeah.
Or if someone has, you know, if people develop their own questions, they may have follow-ups, so we may just, I mean, I did what were one and two.
Right.
One A and two, right?
So...
May we ask our own questions?
I did eight and nine.
What I was just suggesting was a sequence, and then you could do that within the sequence.
Oh, I see.
That's all.
So skip to whatever your question is.
So Roxanne would do number one? Okay, and then we'd go to Erin for number two? Which question would you want to do as number two?
Oh, I had, I had asked, going off of what Mr. Zulus said, I had, I had question eight and nine, which were my two. So there's five of us, if we each take two questions. I'd like to take eight and nine. It's okay with me if I'm not in reverse. I'm fine with whenever I fall.
I was just thinking, though, since they haven't heard from us.
Right, I totally understand, Mr. Chair. However, that, if we need to renumber things, that works for me, too.
Okay.
Are you going to do each member one question and then a second question? Or are you going to do two at the same time?
No, I'll ask eight, get an answer, and then ask nine and get an answer, right?
Actually, you're doing two?
Yeah.
Unless we rotate?
Yeah, rotate.
Oh, well, then I'll do my eight, and then I'll wait, and then when it comes back around, I'll do my nine. Now I get it, sorry, I should have more shake. So are we going to?
I'm all set now, Mr. Chair, thanks so much.
Then we, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, are we thinking of doing then, as Erin said, the ones that she sort of worked on and the ones that I sort of worked on? Is that what we're thinking of?
So you can do one, and then we go to Erin for eight?
Yep.
And then we go to...
Mike?
To me for one A, what is one A?
So the ones that I submitted?
To Richard?
Richard, yeah, okay.
Which question am I asking now?
Whatever one you want, pick one.
Want to make it easy, I'm going to ask question two.
Okay, and I'll go to number three. And then we go back to Roxanne.
So the two that I sort of submitted here were number 10 and number 11.
Okay.
Those were the two that I had submitted. But whatever you want to do.
Why don't you pick one of them? And that can be your next question that you ask.
I don't care, either one, doesn't matter to me.
What number did you say, Roxanne?
10 and 11.
All right, so pick, you want to do 10 first?
Sure.
Just going to make it easy, that we won't forget it. And you're going to...
No, she's already got two.
Yep, I have two.
Erin, your second question?
And my second question will be number nine.
Okay, and Mike, your second question?
So Richard, you took two?
I did, I took two, just to get it, just to fill in the blank.
Someone might take, let's see.
Do you want to do six and seven, since you helped offer that, or?
I'm a little less, I'm a little less clear on six and seven.
Okay.
How about any objection if I do, who made 14? Can I pick 14?
You can pick whatever you want.
Well, I don't want to take it if Roxanne, well, you already got two.
You already got two.
Yeah.
So I'll take 14. All right, that's a good question.
Okay.
That was good.
Am I still not being heard? It's such an odd...
Okay, Richard, Arthur, what do you take?
And I'm still apparently not being heard, which is okay.
But you're still here.
I'm still here.
Erin took 16.
No.
You didn't?
Oh, wait, I took eight and nine.
All right, I'll do 16 then.
No, 16 is off the table.
It's off.
Oh, that is eight, okay, so it's eight, all right, I got it. That's why I have your name next to it, then, is eight, okay.
11, right?
All right, I got it. So I'll take that?
Yes.
11. What do you take on Arthur?
They were combined, 11 and 12, were they not?
Yes.
Oh, so you're doing that one? I'm confused.
Richard.
No, Richard, that's right.
Oh, yeah, 11.
So then...
The last one is six, I think.
Is six, and that's for Arthur.
So each of us has three?
Two.
Good, two.
We're good.
Wow, good work.
What time is it?
Not bad.
9:35.
About 20 minutes, 25 minutes, not bad.
Only town meeting could wordsmith like that. Should we recess until 10? Or do we all just sit here?
We could do that. We could recess for good.
Unless we want to talk about other things. I mean, I'm down with whatever, I don't know what the rules are.
There's nothing on the agenda.
So just in terms of process, Mike, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just in terms of process, so you're going to open up, introduce, and then we're going to, we're going to go on the Roxanne, Erin, Megan, Richard, Arthur rotation?
Yes.
You want to give them a minute to introduce themselves?
Oh, absolutely, and ourselves, to them.
Yes.
And in, first, we'll introduce ourselves, welcome them, introduce ourselves to them, ask them to introduce themselves and say some opening remarks that they may want to indicate, let them know what the question sequence is going to be, and that'll be it.
And then let, Mr. Chair, and then let them, if they have any questions, ask questions, and then have a closing statement.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chair, this is discussion approved. Do we need to vote on these questions? You want to write them?
We have.
You want to motion approve the 10 questions?
Yes.
I'll make it, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto.
I'm quick.
Moving seconded.
Oh, we're in recess? No, I don't think so, well...
I don't know what time it is.
It's 9:35. Let us finish, let us finish this vote, and then I think, what do you think, Mr.? Whatever you...
We could take a 10-minute.
Yeah, do 10.
This is recess, sure. Yeah, so we will finish this motion, and then we'll take a motion to recess, okay? Unless the Chair can just declare a recess. So we have a motion for Mr. Wells, second for Ms. Musto, all in favor of approving the questions that you organized and submitted?
Aye.
unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to recess until 10 o'clock.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, let's take a 10-minute. Welcome, we are moving back into open session. Mr. Wells, did you have a motion to make?
I have a motion to turn a public session, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second to test my microphone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just for the public that may be watching or will be watching a recording, we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving as Chair this year of the Milton Select Board.
I'm Mike Zulus, the Vice Chair.
Richard Wells, Secretary.
Erin Bradley, Member.
Roxanne Musto, Member.
Anne Marie Fagan, Town Administrator.
Thank you very much. And at this point in time, we're awaiting the arrival of our first candidate for interview for the position of Town Administrator, Milton, Massachusetts.
Mr. Chairman, I will look at that candidate.
Thank you.
They're aware that this is going to be televised, correct? Okay, thank you. I was going for the cannabis commission. I was, I was going to be the executive director. No, 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 yeah, no. I, they, it was a public interview process.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Arthur Doyle, this is, yeah, nice to meet you. Thank you for being here.
Hi.
Hi.
Good morning.
I'm Roxanne Musto, nice to meet you.
Oh, we're all shaking hands. We're shaking hands, I guess. Hi, Erin Bradley, nice to meet you.
Nice to see again, Mike Zulus.
What about Chair?
Sure, thank you for having me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Milano, for being a candidate for this very important position in the town of Milton. We have some materials here for you that you might take with you. We have already done the introductions going around the table, so that we can bypass that. What we have as a process is that we will go around the table, individually ask you a series of questions, two from each of us during the course of the interview process, and then give you an opportunity to ask questions of us. But at this point in time, we welcome an opportunity for you to introduce yourself, as this is a recorded meeting and open to the public as well.
Of course, sure. Well, thanks for having me. My name's Nicholas Milano. I'm the Assistant Town Administrator in Medfield today. I grew up in Rosendale and went to Boston Latin School in the city. I now live in West Roxbury with my wife and our young son. I now live in West Roxbury with my wife and our young son. I've worked in government for 10-plus years, seven of which are at the local level, four as the chief of staff to the mayor of Marlborough, and three in my current role as assistant town administrator in Medfield, as I mentioned. I'm passionate about local government. That's where I found my interest laid, after working at the legislature for a couple of years and at the school building authority for a bit as well. It was there where I was really exposed to what municipalities are working through, the challenges that they face, in the context of trying to fund a major school building. And my job was to work with municipalities, help them through the MSBA processes, and fully understand the ramifications of some of their bigger capital, well, some of the biggest capital decisions that they make in a generation in those communities. I think I'm also here and interested in Milton because I have connections to Milton. My wife is from here, grew up here. She and her siblings all attended Milton High School. My in-laws is still here. We're here on a regular basis, and my wife and son were at her parents' yesterday, as she is every Wednesday, to spend the day with her. So she can work remotely, and he can spend the day with his grandparents. We were married here in Milton, down street at St. Mary's, so we do have connections to this community. And it's the reason why I chose to apply. I'm not actively looking for another job. I wasn't interested in other positions when this opportunity arose, and that's why I'm here today. And lastly, I'll just say, I think part of my background and part of my interest in this community is that Milton faces some of the same challenges that we're working on and making progress on in Medfield. Very similar communities in terms of, you know, what the landscape looks like in terms of residential and commercial, overwhelmingly reliant on residential property taxes. So we, I have firsthand understanding of what it takes to work through a budget process when the burden falls heavily on residential homeowners in a community such as this. And, you know, I'm proud of the progress that we've made in the last few years in Medfield and that we continue to make each fiscal year moving forward.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome. Our first question for you will come from the select board member of Musto.
Can you tell us what is your perspective on the unique role of a strong Milton town administrator?
Sure. You know, it's funny. I worked for a mayor, which is obviously more similar to a strong town administrator than the town administrator I currently work in. Medfield has, by charter and by bylaw, a very weak town administrator. A lot of the power still technically resides with the Board of Selectmen. So, like, the Board of Selectmen is still the hiring authority for all employees, so any disciplinary issues eventually arise to their level, which makes it a little bit challenging when dealing with those issues, because by nature, they have to be public. And I think a contrast to here is, is what my familiarity is more like in Marlborough, where you're the hiring, and hiring authority, responsible for direct management of personnel, very active role in overseeing how departments are run, that folks are accomplishing the goals that we set out for them. But at the same time, the select board is the policymaking board, so it's, we, I would look to the select board to set policy, to guide those steps. But as, with a lot of power resting in the town administrator for making sure departments run according to plan, you know, I'd make sure that they're meeting their goals, meeting their targets, and carrying out your wishes in terms of policy.
Thank you.
I'm next.
Ms. Bradley.
How are you? All right. Take a deep breath. You're doing great. It's okay. Okay. So what concrete and actual steps would you take to break down the silos within town departments and create leadership, create a leadership plan for the town to work towards with input from the department heads, all working together, including, because we're not done, you got all that part, right? Including your role and the department head's role in recruiting and retaining key staff?
Sure. So I think, I mean, I think my track record is that, and my leadership style is to be collaborative, I've worked with, I've worked for, I've, I'm very, I have benefited from working for individuals who lead that way. And I've been in positions where I'm second in charge, and I have a voice at the table. And I think that's an important thing, to know that folks around you can come to you with ideas, and they aren't going to be shot down. You're going to be given an opportunity to listen, to hear them out. And the folks that I've worked for, the managers that I've worked for, have all embraced that. You know, my recommendations weren't always taken, but I was always asked, and I think that's important. So in terms of leading a community forward, I think you have to start with that. You have to start with a level of transparency, a level of collaborativeness, and, you know, and anybody coming into a new position, a lot of listening. And that's, I think, how you have to take in that feedback. You also have to look to what already exists and what kind of work the town has done to work towards some of the goals. You know, in Medfield, we have a townwide master plan, and we're not working on everything laid out in the townwide master plan today, but as we move things forward, we're checking off the box of things that were on the list. You know, we had a lot of focus on making the town more walkable and pedestrian-friendly, attracting more businesses to the town, to the downtown, and we've been able to go chase some grants and move in that direction, checking off boxes of things in the townwide master plan, because we've heard from folks that that's what they want us to do. So, you know, I think it's being collaborative, being open to ideas, being open to suggestions, and then working together to, you know, unite everybody towards that common goal. And you had asked also about retention and?
Recruiting.
Recruiting. So, you know, I think it's hard, especially right now. We just went through it in Medfield, where we had our town accountant retired, so we've had turnover in that position, and it's hard to recruit folks to these fields. You know, I'm proud to be part of our younger generation of municipal leaders, but we need to continue to do a job and bring the people into this world, because it can be very rewarding. And what we, what we heard in some interviews with folks who are interested in our accounting position is to get out of that 80-hour work week at major accounting firms, to have a more relaxed work week, but knowing that they're going to put in the hours when they here, but it doesn't mean it's 20 or 30 hours on top of 40. And I think there's a lot to be attractive to in a municipal world. The Massachusetts Municipal Association did a good job when there was a wave of retirements in the town manager field to start attracting new, new voices in, but I think we need to broaden that to some of the other positions, particularly in the financial field. I mean, if an assessor retires, I don't know many people in my generation who are in the assessing field. I think it's, it's, we have to make sure that there's clear paths and support folks when they come in, because you never know who you're going to get at an entry-level position if you can support them and help them develop long-term. That goes a long way. So succession planning throughout the town is something that I'd, I'd be working towards and making sure that we know where those gaps might be.
Yep.
And who's ready or not to take over those positions, and what can we do to make sure folks are ready to do that and step up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Milano, please describe the role and unique duties for a town administrator in a community in the midst of changing needs, such as in housing, infrastructure, and demographic makeup.
Sure. And I think, you know, it's something all communities, most communities are going through these days. You know, the town administrator's goal is to, as we were discussing earlier, is to implement the policy that the select board puts out, working with our department heads to do that. I think in terms of change, a lot of these issues that you mentioned can be really contentious and challenging. I think it's important for a town administrator to be able to take those challenges head-on, but while also pushing through some of those more challenging debates without letting it get to you. You know, we just had, we've had a lot of success on the housing front in Medfield, and that's because we were able to lay out a plan and a housing production plan that was realistic and achievable. So we made significant progress on, you know, getting into compliance with 40B. And while we're not, we're out of Safe Harbor today, we just did approve a 334 residential development at the former Medfield State Hospital. Trinity Financial is coming into town to redevelop 29 of the 37, 38 buildings on the campus. That will take a huge environmental issue and hazardous material issue off our hand, because these are buildings that were built in the late 1800s, early 1900s, and put in a lot of housing. And this was a contentious issue, but what worked out for us is the foundation of it was a long-term planning process, to ask the community what they were looking for in that specific instance in terms of the hospital and its redevelopment. And the, by and large, people wanted the old buildings to be saved and rehabilitated, so we worked towards that goal. First, by listening to the community and by trying to go out to, you know, request for proposals, that would accomplish what we heard back from folks. So I think it's, like I said, it's taking a step back, not getting too caught up in the ups and downs, because there's always going to be ups and downs. There's always going to be tough days and easy days. So just maintain that even keel presence, so that folks know that you're there to support them when things get tough, and that you can push two together on some of those challenging issues.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Wells?
Did you know that Medfield Hospital was the hospital that covered this town?
I did not.
Yeah, for many, many decades. Many decades. Can you please describe the most effective ways for town to communicate with all segments of residents, including informing residents about what town government is doing and what opportunities exist to participate?
Sure. You know, I'm, I'm really proud of the information that we put out publicly in Medfield. If you go to our website, you're going to find what you're looking for, and I think that's really important, that you don't have to click a million times and still not find what you're looking for. Each year for town meeting, we have a town, we have a town meeting page.
In your office.
Hopefully in a good way. We set up a town meeting page that lists all the articles right on the page, what the warrant committee feels about it, what the Board of Selectmen is doing on it, with background information. You know, if it's a financial issue, we'll provide links to information on the Division of Local Services website about that financial issue, whether it's a stabilization fund. It'll be a link to the DLS, summary of what stabilization funds are and what they aren't. The other thing that we have is, just overall, our town finance page, I would say, is very comprehensive. It has everything that you could be looking for, for information about our budget. The Medfield State Hospital is another good example in terms of providing that kind of outreach. So, as I said, it was a long-term planning process. I came in, as the town is transitioning, out of the planning and its implementation. So I was a member of the Medfield State Hospital Development Committee and helped lead that committee, beginning with the request for proposals and ending with the negotiation with the developer, Trinity Financial. And throughout that process, we were lucky to be built on a strong foundation of the planning work, which was very collaborative, a lot of outreach, a lot of public information sessions, a lot of board and committee meetings that went into it. And so we took that baton and ran with it. We, when we put out the, when we drafted the request for proposals, it was released for public comment and feedback. When we had the proposals in, they were obviously public for people to review. During the interviews, we requested people to submit questions that they might want to ask the developers, the two developers that we interviewed. During the evaluation process, we again put out a comment box for people to provide their feedback to us. Once we selected the developer, we then transitioned to telling people what the proposal is and what it meant for the town. Now, that was public interest, several public information sessions with just the town, a couple with Trinity at the table as well. One was at the council on aging just for seniors, to give them an opportunity to have their special meeting, to hear their concerns. We did a weekly newsletter, sometimes bi-weekly, that covered a different component of the proposal. You know, one outlined what Trinity was proposing, one outlined what we thought the fiscal impact would be, one outlined what we thought the transportation impact would be. So just so that people could go to our website, receive all this information right there, and know that they had a voice to come ask us questions. So I think it starts with knowing that we work in government, we're public employees, and transparency, everything has to start with being transparent. The minute you lose folks' trust about transparency, it's over. So we, we're lucky to have a strong foundation around extensive public outreach and participation, and providing those communications that are informative, timely, and of useful information to folks.
Thank you. Mr. Milano, there's a high expectation for public sector leaders to deliver value to diverse and sometimes competing community stakeholders. Could you speak to the delivery and articulation of value in the presence of available resources, potential risks, and achievable results?
Sorry, can you, it's the first part of that again?
I'd be happy to. Yep. And I'm glad that you asked. You're talking about a high expectation that is held, the public sector leaders to deliver value to diverse and sometimes competing audiences in the same community, needless to say. Could you speak to the delivery and articulation of value in the presence of resources that are available, potential risks, and achievable results?
Sure. Interesting question. So I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of municipalities are facing some of the same challenges, and that's finite resources. I was lucky to have worked in a place like Marlborough, which was very aggressive about economic development, and their finite resources. While it was a challenge in the sense that the mayor didn't want tax bills to go through the roof in any way, and we targeted, you know, less than a 2.5% increase on the single-family homeowner and achieved those goals, we had ample resources to undertake a lot of exciting capital investments, a lot of exciting new programs and initiatives, because we had that booming commercial, industrial, and, you know, especially a lot of healthcare companies. So we had, you know, a lot of labs, which generate a lot of personal property value. So the finances in Marlborough are in great shape, and it gives them a lot of ability and agility to implement exciting initiatives. You contrast with such communities like Medfield and like Milton, where things are a little bit tighter, so you have to find the resources where they are. And I think a lot of that goes down to how you plan around using those resources and extracting value from what you have in place. Both in Marlborough and in Medfield, one of my first tasks and both jobs was to, you know, get back to our long-term planning, our five-year capital plan, processing our long-term financial projections, to ensure that we're maximizing the limited resources that we do have. So I think it starts with planning and understanding what you have, and working with folks to, to implement change within the context that you're not going to get everything you ask for every time you come to the table for a budget conversation. I hope I answered that question.
Thank you. You did address value. Ms. Musto, can we return to you?
Sure. Can you describe your experience dealing with town meeting and the warrant process?
Sure. Well, before Medfield, I hadn't. So, it was funny, in the, you know, in Marlborough with the mayor, council, former government, things could move much faster, and you'd look over at some cities, at some towns, and wonder why they're moving more slowly on things. And one of our competitive advantages was that Framingham, for so long, was a town. So when a company wanted to move from Framingham, and Framingham said, "Sure, and we'll give you a tax increment financing deal to do that, but we'll see you next year at town meeting," then they could walk across the street to Marlborough, and we'd say, "Sure, we'll send it down to the city council next week." So it's certainly a more deliberative process, but it's exciting. It gives folks a voice and ability to speak up in their community. In Medfield, I'm involved in developing the warrant, carrying the warrant articles, preparing the warrant report that goes to all the households. We have open, open town meeting in Medfield, so it's a little bit different than, obviously, representative, where anybody can show up that's a registered voter. So we do prepare that warrant. It does get produced and sent out to every single household, because we don't know who's going to come. And that warrant has to be comprehensive, and it has to, the summaries are really important in that case, because folks who might not pay attention most times of the year are very welcome and should come to town meeting. You know, whereas here, with a representative, I think there's a little bit more buy-in from day one. So in our office, we collect all the warrant articles, we work with the warrant committee hand-in-hand. I attend all the warrant committee meetings, along with the town administrator, to go over all the articles. We, whether they're citizen petitions or things that we're bringing forward, we work with parties that have those warrant articles to make sure they're well-written and that they accomplish, you know, the intended goal that they, that they want to, in that our warrant committee, our Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and all the other boards and committees are, are well-versed in what is coming up for them at that town meeting. So, yeah, from top to bottom, we're involved in our office. We, you know, I think we have, as you, as what happens when you're developing a document that multiple people are working on, I think we have 85 different versions going, and we have to put them all together at the end of the day and get it to the printer. And, you know, I think my job, what is good about that process is, it's my job and the town administrator's job, and everybody in our offices, to know those articles backwards and forwards. And by being so heavily involved from day one, we have that background. We know what's, we know what the questions will be, we know what the answers are going to be. So we're prepared when we come to town meeting with, you know, any kind of question that can come, come to us.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradley?
Now, it's my turn again. Okay. So our town is a rich and diverse community. However, that is not represented in town leadership or outwardly facing in our town. Currently, out of all of our department heads, we have one department head that is a person of color, and we have no department heads that are out and open LGBTQ members, and we only have three women that are department heads. So obviously, we have a long way to go on both DEI, and there's also a class issue here in town. Obviously, you can tell. What concrete steps would you take to improve our DEI and this class issue that we have? And what is your experience in improving these issues in other sectors?
Sure. So I'd say first that one of the main reasons that we still live in Boston and are raising our family where we are is because we value diversity, we live in a diverse neighborhood, we want to send our children to a diverse school system. And that's important to us, and it's why we, why we live where we live. And I think when we look around at a potential place to call our home for the long term, there's not a lot of communities that can do that, and Milton is certainly one of them, which is one of the reasons why, first, I'm attracted to this position, and it's, it's a reason why we're long-term interested in Milton for our family. You know, I think, I alluded to it earlier, I think a lot of it is about getting new voices and perspectives in municipal government in the first place, and I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with that. It's not a problem that's unique to Milton, I think it's a problem that's, it's not a problem unique to this profession either, it's, it's across the board, whether it's private sector or public sector. But I think it starts with outreach and have, and being welcoming to folks who might have some interest in municipal government but don't know actually what that means. I think it's attracting talent to positions that might not be leadership positions on day one, but supporting them and empowering them to grow into those roles long-term. In terms of, and you know, and I think we can look at diversity in terms of board and committees as well. One thing that we did in Marlboro was we would go to the state website and download lists of people with different licenses and directly advertise board and committee appointments to them when we're looking for, whether it's financial background, you know, CPAs, whether it's technical background, folks who have licenses for engineers. So we'd reach out to people directly because we didn't know everybody firsthand that lived in the city of 40,000, but it was a way to, to reach populations that we weren't before. In Medfield, we have a policy about board and committee appointments, that they all have to be posted on our website for a certain amount of time before they can be filled. We post all of our openings, we have a running list of all of our openings on our website, so people who are interested can see what's available. And then lastly, I think you had mentioned the EI, but, and on equity in particular, not so much about personnel, but one of the things that I'm proud is to have worked on in my career is the lead service line replacement in Marlboro. There were 1,200 lead service lines still existing in the city, and these are the lines that connect water mains in the street to the plumbing in the house, made of lead, particularly in older communities, older cities, and in traditionally poorer parts of the city because people didn't replace them. And we found that folks just, whether they didn't have the financial means to replace them, they didn't have the knowledge that it was important to replace them, or the ability to handle a complex project, finding a contractor to dig up the road and replace a service line that's coming into their house. So the city said, we're going to do it. We, and I, I think, like I said, it's, one of the things I look back on most proudly because we went, we asked the city council for $5 million to go out and replace the 1,200 lead service lines. And we're lucky because MWRA offers a zero-one cent interest program over 10 years to do that. So it made the financial burden on the city a little bit easier to swallow, but it's a project that the council approves, is still underway to the state to replace those. I think when we're talking about equity, we need to think about what in our infrastructure and is under our control that we can fix. And that is something that I look back on. But in terms of personnel, I think it starts with being open, finding people who are interested in this world. You know, maybe they're not ready to be the finance director on day one, but they're talented individuals who we can support and help develop, and there are ample programs once you get your foot in the door. I am lucky just to have graduated from the Mass Municipal Association at Suffolk University program in local government leadership and management. It's a great program, and it was $2,500, and the town paid for that. So I think there's, there's avenues out there to develop future leaders, we just have to take advantage of it.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Malano, just to clarify, the lead service line replacement, those were private interests that you had to go with, that the public went in and improved?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll just add to that is, it's now something that's been recognized. I think the Flint, Michigan thing really put it into context, but under Biden, there's money now coming to cities and towns and to states to finally get rid of them once and for all. But it's something that we, we took on five years ago now.
Thank you. And my question is, and you alluded to some of this with the, the Medfield State Hospital, but describe some projects that you worked collaboratively with the community that were successful. You can elaborate on some of the prior ones. You can elaborate on some of the other ones, but if you have others as well.
Sure. Obviously, I think the hospital is the big one. In my interview in Medfield, it was one of the questions is, if you're hired, we're going to put this on your plate, how do you feel about that? I said, well, I'm an interviewer, so I feel great about that. No, but it was, it was a rewarding program, and like I said, I was lucky to come in on four years of planning work. Four years? Yeah, by the time I got there, four years of planning work had undertaken, so it was just about implementation, working with the community to implement what they wanted to see. You know, other projects include, in Marlboro, I was a member and led the school building committee there because of my experience at the MSBA. Marlboro was looking at a, they had an older elementary school on the west side of town, west of 495, but they were facing severe enrollment issues and size issues, and just were overwhelmed at the elementary level. So when they had applied, they weren't sure whether it made sense to just rehab the existing facility or build a new school entirely. And what we ended up doing after going through a pretty substantive planning process with the school committee was, at the end of the day, they wanted their fifth grade out of the middle school. Their curriculum was, and their grade configuration was set up that it was K to four at the elementaries, fifth grade kind of in their own little wing, and a massive middle school on a middle school, high school campus that the school committee just didn't think worked for those fifth graders. So they wanted to bring the fifth grade down to the elementary level, which meant for the city, it was time to build a fourth elementary school. They had three at the time. So our, you know, we pushed through, we, you know, we got through the enrollment configuration question, working with the school committee, working with the, you know, folks in the school system, parents and teachers, to arrive at a solution to that problem. The next problem became, where are we going to build this thing? And, you know, you're walking, you're going around town, and I know it's an issue this community has faced as well, is where is their land to build a school? And Marlboro's problem is the land is very valuable for private industry, private landowners don't want to give it up for short money. And after, you know, talking with a number of landowners in geographic locations that made sense for a fourth school, it ended up making, ended up being that the best location was adjacent to the middle school and high school, but a new fourth elementary school, right in the center of town, right in the center of the city, I should say, which made sense geographically for enrollment patterns. But it was a hard decision and a challenging one to arrive at in terms of making that decision about what to do about the enrollment and where to build the school. In, in Medfield, we also just recently sold another parcel of land to a developer for three-quarters of a million dollars to build 24 age-restricted townhomes, six of which will be affordable. This was a parcel of land that the town had purchased many years ago and had kind of kicked the tires on for a long time, but hadn't really ever pushed through. So working with the planning board, the Affordable Housing Trust, and the Board of Selectmen, we finally got to a place where that was put out to RFP with a very defined set of parameters. We didn't want it to be much more than 24 units of housing, and the developers came back with, you know, several competitive proposals about that. And this is located adjacent to our senior center, next to the Kingsbury Club recreational facility, adjacent to the rail trail that we just finished. So it's a great location for age-restricted housing, and, you know, it's also good to get some money in the door, and three-quarters of a million dollars is not, it's not something to sneeze at. And then when it comes to the hospital, as I've discussed, it's, it was a huge project that touched on any number of different constituencies. At the end of the day, one of the, one of the tougher aspects of reaching unification in terms of boards and committees in the community was, the school committee was starting to get very concerned about student age, students coming out of the hospital development. 334 units is a lot. They were only building 34 three-bedrooms, which is the minimum, you know, required for a development of that size to still be allowed on the subsidized housing inventory for affordable housing projections. But this is on the back of some significant building that the town has done to get closer to compliance with 40B. So there were enrollment concerns, not just from the hospital, but from some of the other developments that are either close to completion or nearing completion. So once the school committee started to raise serious concerns about the 45 to 67 kids we anticipated coming from the hospital, we went back to the developer, laid out the concerns, and were able to secure a million dollars in mitigation just to the school system to address those potential issues. Now, whether the kids show up or not, the school system now knows that it's, it has a million-dollar mitigation payment when we close on the deal to address some of those concerns long-term. And that's on top of other mitigation, including reconstruction of three intersections in the area, and as well as the $2 million purchase price that they're paying. So, you know, we worked across different groups to achieve various town goals and bring those projects to completion.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
You know, you drew for us to do both times.
I know. I also, I take it as a moment of luck, and then actually, right before the last one, I got a haircut the day before, so I went for a haircut too to keep.
So the last time before us, Mr. Zulus, we had a two-part questions. Unfortunately, there's only one two-part question in this, so I'm going to ask you. Milton is constrained with large residential base and small commercial base and has limited financial resources to go around. What process would you use when developing the budget? And then also, part B would be to explain the budgeting process when developing a five-year financial plan on top of your day-to-day stuff. So you can do it parts. You kind of alluded, you kind of alluded to it a little bit, and you lost the answer, so.
So I think, like, excuse me, like in Milton, Medfield has, and it's something we face every year. So I've been in a place where I came on about a year after my town administrator had started, and she took over after a town administrator who had been there for, I want to say, 40 years. So as we've moved forward through each fiscal year together, we've changed and implemented more concrete changes to try to make this budget process smoother. One of the challenges that we faced in Medfield in the two years, one of the years that I was there and the two years prior was that the capital budget was always last. And it was, you know, if we have a few hundred thousand dollars left, we'll see what we can do about capital, but otherwise, that's it, don't come talk, talk to us about capital. So we flipped that. We said, we can't keep deferring this. We have a fire engine from the late 1980s, another fire engine from 1992, it's 2022, this is not sustainable. And eventually, these things will break and will be an emergency situation, and the costs will be far and above than if we had just planned on a, on a replacement when it was necessary. So we've adjusted those projects, we've adjusted our process a bit to, you know, start with putting capital first, that's, comes out of our five-year capital plan, so that we know what to expect, what to see is coming down the road. So there aren't any more surprises like, oh, hey, by the way, here's a 30-year-old fire engine, and here's a 33-year-old fire engine, what are you going to do about that? That should have been built in long before it was. And that's the same with the police department, where we had to do, in the last three years, I think we've replaced, I want to say, seven police vehicles and one animal control officer vehicle because things had gotten delayed and pushed off and deferred for so long. It's just saying no one year doesn't mean the problem goes away, it comes back for the vengeance the following year. So planning out, starting with a concrete and comprehensive plan in terms of what those budget needs are, was one of the first things I worked on when we got to Medfield. And it's helped provide some continuity and consistency and predictability to our capital budgeting process. We've also worked on being more transparent throughout the budgeting process, and as I alluded to, with building out the town websites, so folks understood what our goals were and what our processes were and what our financial situation was like. We also updated our financial policies, and we've done a really good job of telling the story about our financial policies. It's one thing to say, hey, you can't have that program or employee you want because it doesn't meet our financial policies, so sorry, nothing we can do. But we tell a story about why reserves are important, why too much change in one year opens up potential issues in the following year, so that folks can embrace and have that background when it comes to the budget process. Lastly, it's just about working collaboratively with the boards and committees that all have a role and a voice. You know, school committees obviously has an important school system that people move to Medfield for. So financially, they have their requests, and we know that, but we've been able to work with them to have good increases, but within our budget that we can afford and carry through. So they want it starts with planning, building out those projections. For us, it was meeting with all department heads, meeting with the boards and committees to understand what their needs were, not only in this year, but in future years, and to have those conversations, say, if you could have anything you wanted, what would that look like? So we knew in terms of long-term needs and long-term goals, what was on the list. But it's about conveying the financial situation, the realities of it, while also working hard to address issues head-on rather than deferring them until it's too late.
There's always a significant issue out there that's going to come around the corner and blindly impact the town. Could you give us some sense of how to advise anticipating those circumstances and then managing them when they occur? And also include in there any things that would be of beneficial values of the town that might be opportunities to capture, and how one identifies those as well?
Sure, I think it's, it's a good question. So obviously, you never know what's going to happen, and you just kind of have to be prepared that these days come. And we've been lucky, other than the COVID stuff, which was disruptive to all of us, that those unexpected shocks haven't come up. You know, I think it's, it's partly to working closely with all of our department heads and boards and committees to understand what they're working on, what they're tackling, so that, you know, a contentious issue that's kind of bubbling under the surface in one department doesn't rear its ugly head because it's been ignored or hasn't been addressed well enough. For us in Medfield, I'd say, you know, we have our own water system, and we have our own sewer system, so we're not hooked into the MWRA for either water or sewer. And I think you always worry about those things, and one thing that happened this year, this spring, was our biggest producing well, well number six, which is located over, heading toward Sherburne, the pump broke. And that means it's, it's middle of May, folks are going to start filling up their pools and irrigating their lawns, and our highest-producing well broke. And oh, by the way, we're in the middle of constructing a water treatment plant for wells three and four, so wells three and four are offline. So we're down to two wells that produce a smaller amount of water. So in that case, you just had to react. And we put out the notices on the website, we reached out to folks directly to say, this is a temporary problem. And part, part of the reason why it's a temporary problem is because we're investing in something to make these problems go away. Our treatment plan at wells three and four includes rehabilitation to one of those wells to ensure that we have lots of redundancy if any one or two wells were to go down across the town. This occurred a year before that project's going to be complete, so it caught us a little off-guard, and it's one of those worst nightmares where, you know, if people didn't stop using water, we would have issues around being able to provide sufficient water pressure, whether it's for fire suppression or for just drinking water. And so we, you know, we do the reverse 911s, you do the messages through the website, you do social media, and you just hope that it gets out there far enough. And, you know, I'm happy to say that in this case, we had a significant drop in water usage, both in May and in June. Now, that doesn't bode well for the enterprise fund in terms of its revenue numbers and its revenue projections, which is a different problem, but that's just what we face. And of course, in this case, it's going to carry through the summer with the lack of rain, and we're under more water restrictions, even though we're fully back online now. So, I mean, we knew that redundancy was important, which is why we're building this treatment plan and rebuilding our well. What we didn't anticipate, and what surprised us coming around the corner, was, oh, well six just went down. And you just have to be prepared, have some systems in place to react to it, to inform folks of what's going on and get through that problem. I think in terms of things that can benefit communities, I would say that the federal government's support to cities and towns through COVID and then with the American Rescue Plan Act was really surprising, that the amount of money that pushed through to cities and towns was money that we didn't expect. I think the CARES money first, that got us through COVID, made a lot of sense. And that's something that we could have expected, because nobody knew what government was going to be able to look like through, through the impact of COVID. But to then have the Rescue Plan Act money come through, that's, you know, just unexpected funds, and I, and I've seen the work that Milton's doing on, you know, pushing that money towards small businesses and, and some investments in your infrastructure. And it's, it's similar to what we're doing in Medfield. It's, it's a great benefit. You have to be careful how you spend those money because it is one-time money, so if it's going towards operating budgets, it raises, you know, that's one of those things that creates a problem next year. As long as you're transparent about that and folks understand that, hey, we're getting through this year because of this use of one-time funds, but next year, we're going to have to do something about it, I think that's okay. So I think in terms of something that benefits you, it's like, changes from the federal government that you don't really expect, that work out to our benefit. And for us, I think some, a lot of our money will end up in water or sewer, so those are easy places for it to go. But we have, you know, some IRMAC, some money for some other capital items, for a new playground in town, and a few other items. So I think, you know, we're looking forward to exciting uses of those money that was entirely unexpected.
Thank you. And now it's time for you to take a breather.
Good job.
We should let you know that at our next select board meeting, which is July 27th, we are scheduled to make a decision on the town administrator position. At this time, we're At this time, we'd like to give you an opportunity to have a dialogue, questions that you might have for any or all of us.
Sure, I appreciate it. And I did ask a version of this to Mr. Wells and Mr. Zulis in the first round of interviews, so I guess for the rest of you, if you want to chime in, I think I can pick at and pick up some of the pieces and threads in our conversation about what would you view as, you know, first, short-term goals for the town administrator coming in, and then what are some of your long-term goals for the town administrator?
Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want, I'll go first. So I'm recently elected. I was just elected in April. I had to think for a second. I am the first candidate to ever go and speak to all the department heads. One of the department heads has been here for 17 years, and nobody has come to talk to him. My short-term, I think, most important thing is the morale and the staffing within our town. I think that the last few years has been really hard on them, and we just recently lost our town finance director. Thank you, guys. And so, and she was wonderful, and really, she was very smart. So that's going to be, I think, the first issue facing, the town administrator. For me, on the long term of where, what I would like to see, kind of my goals, is to really incorporate all the different precincts in town. I think that I'm also the first out-open LGBTQ+ member ever elected to the select board. It's 2022. That's, you know, that's an issue. So I think that there's a lot of things that we have to do to really engage and rise up, you know, raise up the folks within our precincts and really get them activated in town government. So there's a lot of contrasting views, and there's a lot of people that are vying for different things, and I think that's going to be a really hard line to walk. But right off the bat, it's a staffing issue.
Hi. I would say there are a bunch of different things that I would like to add. I think communication is really key, open communication and listening to people, not just the department heads, but the employees. Sometimes employees have some great ideas, too. You know, it's not just your DPW director, it's the guy who's out on the field that can tell you a lot of great information. So I think that's really important and essential. Also, in our town, we have a lot of different, unique neighborhoods and neighborhood associations, so I think that's an important piece to work with and to engage with at different points in time. And transparency is, I like to hear that you are very transparent in your positions that you've had. That's very important in this town. I think Erin and I could probably say when we went around meeting different people in the community that they really felt that they wanted more transparency, and they wanted to feel like they're part of the process as a community member, and that means everybody in the community. The other thing is, with regards to committees and boards, we're going to have a subcommittee looking at that. And I think that that's an opportunity to make sure that people know what's available out there for positions, what those committees do, what the commitment is, and try to make sure that we're encouraging everybody who's interested to apply for those positions. So that would be sort of a longer-term goal that we're going to sort of look at. And I think the bottom line is whoever is the TA, we want to have a strong town administrator, and we want someone that's going to listen to all groups and be inclusive of everybody and support everybody that needs to be supported and bring this town along. And we have a lot of challenges, as you mentioned, a lot of fiscal challenges, and that's going to be hard going forward. But I think the transparency and include people in those discussions is key. Thank you.
Well, I think you heard from Richard and me.
Mr. Chair.
There's a tendency for entities to focus on the concept of the plan being the budget and the budget being the plan. Oftentimes, what that does is to drive the entity toward a narrow focus. And one of the things that is high on my agenda is while recognizing that, keeping the aspirational level open so that you maintain, develop and maintain a vision for the future of the community. And this ties into the notion of three-year and five-year planning, master plan, implementation work within the community, and also the seeking out of external resources, be they financial, collaborators with neighboring communities, or other entities that can bring value to the community. Just a couple of thoughts that tie into that.
Just, I had one other question, and I asked this previously. I assume, based on the conversation, the finance director position still is open. I take it that's correct. Like I said, it's a challenge right now. That would be certainly 1A, if not 1-1.
Uh-huh. That's why I said that.
Okay, you know, I think, based on our conversation, you've answered a lot of the stuff that I was coming in with questions about. I appreciate the time to talk about your short-term, long-term goals. I think I'm comfortable with where things are at, so I appreciate the time. If you have any further questions, I'm happy to chime in.
Thank you. And we appreciate your candidacy very much.
Thank you so much. Yes. Light reading. Thank you. Bye-bye. Can we have a, can I use the restrooms?
Welcome back to the continuation of interviews for candidates for town administrator. We are now ready to interview our second candidate. Ms. Peggins is bringing the candidate into the room at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Arthur Doyle. This year, I'm chair of the board. Nice to meet you, sir.
Hi, good morning. I'm Roxanne Musto, member.
Hi, how are you? I'm Erin Bradley.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Mr. Greeno, nice to see you again. Whoa, go around the back.
Thank you very much for being a candidate for this important position. Oh, you have it.
I was here Monday all day. Well, that's good to hear.
My spies were following me. Want me to give you a ruder where you went?
We also have a copy of the most recent warrant to go with your town report. And you've met everybody going around the table. What we will follow as a procedure is to have each member of the select board present you with two questions, but not at the same time. So we'll rotate around the table, each one will do one, and they will come back for a second question. We'll also then, at the conclusion, provide you with an opportunity to make inquiries of the members of the select board. So with that protocol established, if you're comfortable?
I am good. I'm ready to go.
We got to. So Ms. Musto, would you be our lead-off batter, please?
Sure. What is your perspective on the unique role of a strong Milton town administrator?
A strong?
Milton, town of Milton.
Oh, Milton. I thought you said militant, and I certainly didn't want to be that. The town administrator must first and foremost follow the special act of 2016. Okay, that's where the powers and duties come from. A strong administrator is there, in my opinion, and I've been, I was a strong administrator in Bourne, a lot of appointment powers and so forth, is to really be the manager of a network. And the networks of the department heads and their subordinate staff and the other elected boards, helping the department heads to do the best job they can without getting into being interfering. Also must be a leader with the legislative delegation as it's directed and the policy is set forth by the select board. A strong town administrator has to be present. They have to be at evening meetings. They have to be willing not to just go to Tuesday or Wednesday night select board meetings and come into the office. They have to be at the planning board, they've got to be at the other elected board meetings, they have to keep a relationship going with those other elected boards because you're working with those staff people as well. You have to be forward-thinking in both fiscal terms and planning terms. I said in the first interview, if you look out five or seven years in a budget, you're probably making assumptions that may or may not come true because we kind of change over everything. Everything changes. We're heading towards some sort of a fiscal issue coming up in the next couple of years. So if you had a seven-year plan or a five-year plan, a lot of those assumptions are going to change, and a lot of the way revenues are going to come in are going to change, and you have to be prepared to make those. You have to be, you know, you want to forecast what the municipal needs are, you need to be, I guess, the best thing to do is to show up, have an open-door policy, get out into the community, espouse the policies of the board, make sure that everybody in the departments is working toward those goals, too. Even if they're with another elected board, there are areas within the goals of the select board or through the master plan that we can work on together. I am a strong also believer, and I don't want to belabor this too too much, in multi-board meetings. I think it's really important that not just the warrant committee, but the town select board meet with the school committee a couple times a year, the town select board meet with the board of health a couple times a year, bringing joint meetings together to be sure we're all walking the same path and we know of any potholes that are coming up that we need to be aware of.
Thank you.
I go next. Thanks, Mr. Chair. What concrete and actual steps would you take to break down the silos within town departments and create a leadership plan for the town to work towards with input from the department heads working together, including recruiting and retaining key staff?
So not knowing exactly where those silos lie, I think one of the things that you do to break that down is you meet in teams. There may be a topic that we're working on, there may be, I don't want to use East Milton Square because I've read way too much about that over the past couple of weeks, but increase in school population, pick one. Now, how is that going to affect planning? How's that going to affect the health department? How's that going to affect police and fire? How's that going to affect the budget? There's a number. So we bring these people together, and we start working on the what ifs, and how is this going to be accomplished, and where are the developments going to be? And one of the things that I noticed in doing some of the research here, you have almost 500, over 500 pending 40B units, either in development, in appeal, or in the queue. Even though Milton's a town of 28,000, 30,000 people, 500 potential units are a lot of units. How do we get the teams together to work on that? When you work in teams, and I'm going to get to the other piece in a second, those silos get broken down. You open up the lines of communication, perhaps where there had been, well, I work for this board, and they're elected, I really don't have to transfer over and do anything with anybody else. I think technology can help with that, too. The other thing that we do is we meet. I don't have department head meetings for the sake of having department head meetings and me talking at them. That's never any good. There better be something topical. But you do meet, you know, I would hope at least early on, every couple of weeks thereafter, monthly, and you're going to meet with the department leaders one-on-one all the time. You know, I'm going to be on, if you will, with public safety and so forth, and you have a good relationship with the school department. You really have to build, you have to build a relationship with Curry, you've got to build a relationship with Milton Academy, all of those types. And all of the different departments interact with them, be it health or otherwise. We need to be able to be sure that we have the same message, and it's going to be a good message going forward on how to work with those folks. I think that answers your question. I hope it does.
Yeah, except for the recruiting and retaining key staff.
Recruitment takes patience. An example, we, in Bourne, I lost, and I think I brought this up at the first interview, my finance director and treasurer all within the same month. My, you know, the whole team just, they had a pact when they came in, they had a pact going out. I was texting with the former finance director yesterday, there was nothing, it wasn't that they were leaving because it was just time. And it took three rounds of recruitment effort to get the right finance director. Sometimes it's hard, you want to fill the seat really quickly, but I think it takes patience. The other thing I think we need to look at is how and where we recruit. We want to bring in people with a lot of different life experience, not, and credible experience in the position that they're applying for. How, other than show me your degree and five years' experience in progressively, you know, responsible roles, tell me what your life experience is on top of your credentials that make you the right fit for the job in Milton, whatever that job may be. When you're recruiting as well, if you're recruiting an accountant, which I know is something that we have to do here, you want to bring, you want the treasurer involved, you perhaps want one of the select board members involved as a sounding board. You're the appointing authority for the accountant, too, I believe, if I read that right, I think so. And you certainly want to bring in someone from the school department because there's interaction all the time with the schools and the accounts, especially with all the grants that they have to do and things have to be tied out. So you don't want to do it, again, in a vacuum, you want to bring in people. And then the ultimate decision, you get five, and you're at the three, you do a second interview, and hopefully, you can pull somebody out of the first round, but if you can't do it the first round, have the patience to go another round.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Greeno, you addressed this a little bit, but perhaps you can elaborate. Please describe the role and unique duties for a town administrator in a community that is in the midst of changing needs, such as in housing, infrastructure, and demographic makeup.
I think I can do that best by example. Bourne was the last town on the Cape that really got development. The coastline closed up, and all of a sudden, we were at our limit for sewer because we had an agreement with Wareham to send so many gallons to Wareham, and that was allocated. We did a lot of economic development work, and I kind of explained that in the last interview. And that brought in all kinds of new housing, some 40Bs, some affordable, some reuse of property, 400 units, plus or minus, on Main Street and Buzzards Bay. The property values were rising, people that were working in the town couldn't afford to live in the town anymore. to live in the town anymore and we had to do some addressing of that. So we looked at, you know, lots that the town may own or lots that are in tax title that we could, we could put into housing in, non-conforming lots and build some small housing like that for those types of things. We had a lot of industry coming in onto the south side of the bridge, you know, we focused on the blue economy. So I think it goes back to the answer to my, of my first question, is you've got to be proactive, you've got to see what the, what the data's telling you, you've got to look at the data, you also have to be pragmatic, common sense, sometimes trumps data, but data can be a good helper in that. If the town is growing, there is a, you know, it's kind of a Machiavellian thing, you only have a defined area that you can employ folks. And how do you do that? Do you look at your zoning to go up? Do you look at your zoning for reuse? That's one thing. When you bring in lots of new families, that creates a, and it's a great thing, please don't misunderstand me, but the single-family homes don't cover the cost of service that a municipality gives. You have limited space for economic development and how do you look at that? Where do you want it? What are the keys, the key areas that you want to develop or redevelop? You want to make sure that you're fair in your recruitment on businesses is, you know, rightfully so, we're all looking at diversity, equity, and inclusion and those types of things. You want to be sure that what you're doing isn't not allowing folks to be able to move in in different income categories as well. I think you have, a good town has a good mix of different types of people.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, just a point of order, I think we're going to have to go back, do not allow Mr. Guarino to open up. Speaking of, we went right at, we went right into the questions.
You're right, sorry.
We did, so we can come back to that at the end of the end of the.
So all the mistakes in the first four questions. I also want to, I, I'm just.
I can do it at the end.
Okay. Thank you. So, given that, could you please describe the most effective ways for a town to communicate with all segments of residents, including informing residents about what town government is doing and what opportunities exist to participate?
Sure, beyond the normal posting and putting things on the website, which many people don't read, some people do. There's certainly the public, the social media aspect that should be, as I said in the first interview, one way and not interactive, otherwise your whole day is spent answering people on, on that. I think it's important to put things out, you know, I've been getting the Milton Scene, I've been, I subscribe to that, so I get that on a daily basis, I've been looking at the Milton Times. There were a couple of sites that I ventured to that I decided that probably wouldn't be the best place to be to find out really good things that are going on in the town. There's a lot of opinions out there, like there is in every town, you know, every town thinks they're unique and every town has their own rhythm, but there's always the common thread that kind of flows through lots of communities. I think the other things, you know, there's, you've got to use the Twitter feed, if there's a storm, if there are traffic impacts, there's software available like C Click Fix you can use on, on some public works things. You need to go out to the community as well. I think you need to be, if there is a, let's say you're looking to do the O word, you know, either a general or a dead-excluded override of some sort, talking about it at select board meetings and at warrant committee meetings is great, but that's really not getting the word out on the need, if you're really serious. You need to go to the rotaries, you need to go to the citizen groups, you need to do it in multiple languages, if that's what you need to do here as well. You need to get out there, you need to be visible, you need to tell the story, make the case, and that can be on an override or that can be on, we're going to have a municipal forum on open space, not just CPA open space, just in general. You know, you need to get out there, you can't just do it from the town hall because people aren't coming to town hall, people don't tune into channel, I don't know if it's 13 or 7 or whatever it may be here for your public access.
We have 8, 9, and 22.
The other thing is to hold citizen academies. A lot of folks who may live in town don't really have any idea what the municipality does, other than collect quarterly tax bills and run the schools and plow the roads. And towns do a lot more than that. So municipal academies are very, you'll get, you know, do a 12-week academy. One of the towns that does a really good job on this, Bourne wasn't one of them, Barnstable was. You know, one week you do, do three sessions on, the police chief comes in or the investigator comes in and they talk about what the police department does, fire department, planning department, you know, and people get a good handle on how the municipality kind of weaves together. And then we had, we used to have a town meeting 101, so it wasn't a pre-town meeting per se, but it was a public forum where, and you know, this was all pre-COVID, you know, post-COVID, you can do a lot of things now, high-grade wise, that I think are now going to become part of the daily routine of how we do business. But we would have pre-town meeting where people could come in, we would read the articles, we would not debate the articles, that wasn't the forum for that, town meeting was the forum for that. But we would explain what it was, we would put up, you know, the PowerPoint on each different ones and let people ask questions, but not debate the right or wrong of it. So when people did come to town meeting, and I know it's a representative town meeting here, I believe, you know, they're educated and you need to do that with your town meeting members too, you need to get the material out to them in a timely manner. But you can do the citizen forums and you can do pre-town meetings or you can do, there's lots of ways to get out there, you just have to have the energy and the willingness to do it. And I'm, just so you know, I'm the Energizer Money, I love this stuff, I'm still doing it, I still love it. And, you know, I'm first one in, last one out and I'll be at meetings three to four nights a week. I explained my personal situation in the preliminary interview and you're going to get ungodly hours from me because you're going to be here all the time.
Thank you. There's a high expectation for public sector leaders to develop and deliver value to diverse and sometimes competing community stakeholders. Could you speak to the delivery and articulation of value in the presence of available resources, potential risks, and achievable results, please?
So, everything we do better have value of sorts. You know, one of, one of the things that I was interested to look at, and then I'll get into this a little more detail, was your income per resident, okay, and your expenditure per resident, per capita, was almost equal, it was almost perfect, and you don't find a lot of towns that are like that. Your per capita income was $4,069 and your, $4,098 and your per capita expenditure was $4,069. That's pretty good. That doesn't get into value, but it does show that you're being good stewards of the money. So there are going to be people with disparate views, you're going to have different views in the north part of town than you might have at East Milton that you might have on 138. People are going to have different expectations of what their municipality can bring to them. And I think the key to that is when you're developing policy, you consciously put that up on the board. What are the impacts, are the benefits going to be here? What are the impacts of the benefits going to be here? And if it's like this, sometimes it might have to be like this because you're looking at a particular project or a particular program. But generally, if it's like this, you want to see what, what you need to do to try to get it to balance. Things aren't always going to come out balanced, they're going to be this way or this way and everyone, not everyone, some are going to feel aggrieved on whatever that you might do. One of the things that municipal government should be doing is the common good. That's what we do. What is the best for the common good? And that will have various opinions depending on the various groups that you speak to and you want to be sure that you're bringing in a broad swath of information so that you're providing as best you can, things for the common good. And again, I mentioned this at the first interview, libraries, recreation departments, schools certainly just because of their nature, police services, but in programmatic things, rec, library, and there's others, council on aging. Those are agencies that everyone can participate in equally regardless of their fiscal, their personal fiscal abilities. And we need to be able to be sure that those things are strong.
Thank you. Mr. Messer, shall we reach your end to you, please?
Sure. Describe your experience dealing with town meeting in the warrant process.
Okay. I was an elected town meeting member in my hometown in Greenfield, there were nine precincts. I was a, so I've been working with town meeting for a long, long time, open town meeting, representative town meeting, putting the warrant together, working with the moderator, I think it's important to, certainly work with the moderator on where the bylaws are regarding town meeting, getting information out. But in preparation of the warrant, it's beyond just the budget. There, you know, you may have to work with council on various articles if there's, you know, there's bylaw changes, zoning changes, and things like that, you're going to want council to chime in. But I've put the warrant together, I work closely with the department leaders and the select board on the warrant, as well as the other departments. Health department may have some, health board may have some particular articles they want on, so you want to be sure that you're bringing them into the fold. There's a lot of articles that are perfunctory every year, you know, that they just put on. We used to do, what we tried to do in Warren, we had essential articles and contingent articles, so we could get the budget out of the budget and getting the, accepting grants and chapter 90 money and all of those types of things. Not out of the way, but discussed and voted early. We tried to do zoning at a separate meeting because there was a lot of zoning going on in Bourne at the time. And then we would have, if you had CPA articles that went to revolving fund articles, you know, we tried to make those contingent, so one couldn't happen without the other and we tried to pair those together. You had a very extensive warrant. We tried to consolidate that and each town has a different view of that. We would take all of our CPA articles, all of our capital expenditures, everyone could vote or ask questions on each piece of it, but it was one article. So it wasn't an article for $5,000 for this or $10,000 for that. The revolving funds were all blocked together as well and we brought them up, certainly had lively discussion at town meeting, but it was a way to make, and some towns don't want to do this, I understand that, for where we were, it made the town meeting more efficient. And when I was, when I was in Rockingham, Vermont, this was a few years ago, we would put an article on at the end of the town meeting because everybody wants to leave, that was an open town meeting before that. Child, the residents of Warren, we did it in Warren, Mass. too, I took it with me, be responsible for the maintenance of their own sidewalks because the town took care of the sidewalks, and we'd put that on at the end and it would keep people there. A little, little town meeting science.
Thank you.
Aaron.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our town is a rich and diverse community, however, that is not really represented in town leadership or outwardly facing for our town. We have a long way to go on both DEI and class issues and acceptance of those things in our town. What concrete steps would you take to improve our DEI and class issues we have and what is your experience in improving these issues in other sectors?
So, in my work, and I know it doesn't sound germane, with the Massachusetts Rural Development Council, we did a tremendous amount of work before this was a buzzword on diversity, inclusion, and equity. We were trained, we made sure that when we, and a lot of what we did had to do with socioeconomic inequality. But we did a lot on working with municipalities as well as state and federal agencies on how to better bring in a broad spectrum of folks to work in those agencies and work with those people. It's the way, I kind of said it a little earlier, a lot has to do with how you advertise positions, a lot has to do with how you outreach for those positions. Some of the positions in town may only require a sentence like, tell me what experiences you have that fit the skill set that we have for this position and not necessarily put in, you know, high school, five years, GED, what, there are different ways to do that. The other thing I think you need to be able to do is when you start to bring in a diversified workforce, for instance, we all celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day now, Columbus Day, we all celebrate in one way or another St. Patrick's Day, you know, people, you know, regardless. You need to be able to recognize that you have people with different cultural backgrounds, celebrate those days as well, have the school, work with the schools to do projects on that type of thing. Bring experts in on diversity, inclusion, to your department leaders on what they can do to diversify their workforce within their own departments. I was, I mentioned it in the previous, I was taught, if you will, trained, however you may want to say it, I'm from Greenfield, it's, you know, it's not a very, it wasn't a very diverse community when I was growing up. I was taught by a gentleman named Kirby Edmonds, TFC associate, he worked nationally. Phenomenal, things that I would have never thought of because it wasn't in my lexicon to think of that type of thing. Now I think about it and I think about how do we best get out to those folks that may not think they have a place here, that are very qualified to do the work. And in Bourne, that wasn't a hugely diverse community either. However, there was a Native American population with the Wampanoag tribe, we had indigenous fishing rights, we had to explain that to folks that would call, this person doesn't have a fishing license, we'd have to explain that. We had a fairly substantial Cape Veridian population in the area and so there was a lot of recruitment that, that way as well.
Okay, thank you. Just, just so you know, I'm from Agawam originally, so fellow 401(c)(1).
Agawam Brownies, we used to play football.
That's right.
We used to kick the daylights out of us too, as I recall.
Yes, we did.
You know, and that's a funny thing, how towns, you know, the depopulation in many areas of school-aged children, Greenfield used to be in what they called the double-A Conference, Springfield, Springfield Tech, Agawam, Holyoke, their population, school population is down now, they're now playing, you know, Pioneer and Granby and Turner's Falls, so, yeah.
Yeah, changes, thank you.
Mr. Doel.
Sure there was some level of high school football played out in Western Mass, but.
Excuse me.
I did not play.
As a former Brockton boxer, I...
There you go.
So let me, let me, let me get to my question.
Was the largest high school east of the Mississippi.
It was at one time, at one time. You may have touched on this, but could you, Mr. Green, have described some projects on which you worked collaboratively with the community that were successful?
Sure. Yeah, we had, we had, there's a lot. Let me see if I can hone it down a couple of good ones. I think the downtown renovation of our park, we didn't have a town comment. We had a citizens committee together, we had a lot of studies. We had studies after studies after study how to, how to revitalize Main Street in Buzzards Bay.
I was there yesterday.
Were you? It's, it's different, isn't it? I'm very, I'm very proud of it, actually. Still, it's got a ways to go. But we put a committee together and it was the Chamber and the Maritime Academy and citizens and recreation department and some town boards, too. And we created a really beautiful downtown park right on the canal. We redid the gazebo, we re-landscaped it all, we put a, we put a small park with a splash pad in there as well. We did some redesign of the traffic patterns as much as we could because of the canal in an effort to, you know, we expanded the concerts down there, we started doing food trucks down there, all those types of things. But it started with a core group of people that wanted something different than we had. The other was inclusive playgrounds. A lot of the, we had great open space and great playgrounds, but a lot of them weren't fully accessible. So with the Community Preservation Committee and a citizens group, we created, they were creating a second one, but one that I can not take credit for, but was done when I was there, a really nice inclusive playground with a walkway to that park that was accessible. And the, so that was a cool thing. The other, the other thing that we had a problem with, and it's a maritime community, so it's a little different, we had problems with getting boats launched, okay? And we, you know, that's not something you think about here, but we, it was a big deal. And we ended up working with the Shore Harbor Committee, citizens groups, I won't get into the mooring thing that we talked about at the last interview, and ended up through capital getting enough money to put in a two-lane boat launch over at Monument Beach. And that, that was a big deal. It was, it was, at the time, $800,000. Took coffers games, we had to close some things off and send people to different, different areas to launch, and that was very successful. So those are a couple. There is a lot that I can come up with, but those are two.
Thank you.
Three.
See, Mr. Chee, I thought I wasted my time going to Born yesterday.
Learned a lot today.
My grandpa's from Monument Beach.
There's always the unforeseen issue of significance out there that's going to come around the corner and impact the town. How do you advise anticipating these instances, identifying them in advance as much as possible?
Could you read the first part of that again, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
Sure. There is always the unforeseen issue of significance that's out there, hidden around a corner, that's going to come around unexpectedly and have an impact upon the community. What are your thoughts on how do we anticipate to identify, to address such instances? And also note in this context, those things that might be out there that would benefit a community that could be identified?
On the latter part first, every community has a great intellectual capacity within its citizenry that, that can bring things to light if you allow them to do that, if you give them the funnel, the vessel, if you will, to, to do that. And I, I think that that's a key to municipal success in the long term. Anticipating the sinker curveball that you weren't anticipating, sometimes you can hear the rumblings underground and you say, ah, it's nothing, it's going to go, go away, and then it doesn't. And then you're, then you're caught flat-footed. Other times, if you are engaged as much as you can be, and again, I, social media is a, both a blessing and a curse, you may be able to get some inkling on that end. It may be someone on the street just says to you, hey, you know, there's a bunch of folks over on, we're just going to use the street, Maple Street, that are really concerned that the sidewalk's buckling, and that may not be a social issue, but you know, you may want to take a look at it because they're getting, they're thinking about getting a petition together. Go over and take a look at that sidewalk, you know, have, have, have Chase Berkeley, have somebody go over and take a look at that sidewalk and, and see if there's, if there's anything toward it or not, and be prepared to answer it. Sometimes things, sometimes things just come out of left field and you don't know they're going to come. The key is to hear it, accept the comments, don't dismiss it, respect the people that are bringing it to you, and follow up. And then when you follow up, make sure you report back to those folks. But be sure if it's going to cost any, you know, if it's a cost issue, a money issue, it's got to come before the select board, you got to talk about it.
Thank you.
My second question, Mr. Chair, okay. All right, all right?
Yep, I passed over you, I apologize.
Last, we had a couple of two-part questions. This is the only two-part question in this series, so. My question is, Milton's constrained with a large residential base and small commercial base with limited financial resources to go around. What process would you use when developing the budget? And then part B of that is explain the process you might use when developing a five-year financial plan because on top of your day-to-day budget.
Okay, so, I kind of mentioned this at the beginning, you have kind of a zero-sum game as to territory. There's only so much land. You have up to 500, and I'm not making a judgment call on these, I'm just saying, in the queue are up to 500 affordable units, good, bad, or indifferent. That's not my point. The point is that that's a lot. You have limited area for commercial development. You have, you have preserved a lot of open space in this town, which is to your credit. It makes Milton Milton, it allows Milton to be Milton. You have state land in town, too, with the reservation and some of the other things. So the key is, are there areas that can be looked at for new development? Is that something that the town is interested to do? And then if it is, be prepared, I think, to not expect it to happen in 12 to 24 months. Be prepared to be methodical, not study it and put it on the shelf. What's possible? What's the infrastructure need going to be? What's the capital is going to be? Are you going to do any tax increment financing? Are you going to do tax, tax incentive zones, those types of things? Is that something that you're willing to do or interested in doing? What's your market? Or are people knocking on the door to come in? What can you glean from them if they want to come in for impact fees? They used to call it linkage. I don't think they still call it that anymore, but those types of things. And make sure your road systems are going to be all right. What's MassDOT going to say about this if it's entering into a state, a state intersection? Are they going to help you if there needs to be, if there needs to be lights? Are they going to help you with the, with the cost of construction or only on the design? Are you going to work with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission on these things as well? Develop the plan, start marketing the plan, and be strategic in what you want to bring in. As for redevelopment areas, those are new development areas, as for redevelopment, are there currently places in your developed areas that are not maximizing the efficiency of the space, I guess that's available? Are there vacant buildings? Are there underutilized second and third floors? Can those things be converted into modern office spaces or maybe second and third floor dwelling units to get, kind of get a community feel for that area? Do you have the wherewithal to do eminent domain taking, which is complicated, expensive, and generally not well thought of by the people around the area that you're doing it to? Are you willing to put up boards of survey on some of these dilapidated, if there are dilapidated or under, buildings that may not be up to code and start the process of what boards of survey can do to get people either to fix them or you're going to tear them down? We, in fact, tore some down in Buzzards Bay and put the lien on the property. And those have created new spaces. So you, I'm all for that. Can you go up instead of out? Is that something that the town's willing to do in densely zoned areas? Does that change the character too much? Or are there certain places in the community where that may be acceptable? So I don't know if that answered the whole question. I think the other part was putting the budget together. And, you know, that's how you're going to get tax revenue in. It's hard, you know, you can raise all the municipal fees in the world and it's not going to amount to anything as far as long-term sustainability of things. If you look at your...
You mean permitting fees and...
Right, oh, yeah. I mean, there's some linkage fees you can get on big developments, but, you know, you raise the fee for a zoning permit, it's not going to make a lot of difference in a 140-some-odd million-dollar budget. But now, when you look at your budgeting, you asked how we, how we put the budget together. I think that was the second part of the question.
Second part was like, how you develop it in like a five-year financial plan as well as your day-to-day.
Well, you, five-year plans are only as good as the economy around you, but they're, they're good for, for exercise purposes and planning purposes. I, I think you should try to put a two-year budget together when you can, you know, so you know what you're going to be doing each year. So a five-year plan, you want to look at your, not only at your departmental needs, what the forecasting is for the economy over the next, you know, we go into a recession, it's a three-year climb out from the time that ends. But you want to look at your rolling stock and your capital plan in part of this five-year piece, and how do you, how do you parcel that out? You know, your debt, at least according to DLS, was at 3.99% your overall non-excluded debt, I believe. That's pretty low relative to a lot of towns in the area. It's not bad, good for you, but it's relatively low. It should be in the 5% to 8%, 5% to 10% area if you're doing a lot of capital improvements. So you want to look at that, you want to look at your free cash and your stabilization, make sure that those funds are in place as well. They're, in my opinion, and this is only Tom's opinion, your, your free cash certainly is not. The last one I looked at was at about 2.5% of the, of the general fund operating budget. Your, your stabilization, non-special stabilization was at about 6% or 6.5%. That's okay, but you certainly want to try to get that free cash, I think, up, up to the 5% to 8% level at a minimum. So you, you know, I don't know what COVID did for you folks and what ARPA money's doing for that type of thing, but you want to look at your health, you're self-insured, so you want to keep a look at that health insurance trust. You want to look what the trends are in that going forward, and if you're going to have to do any impact bargaining or in your next round of negotiations, what's that going to be? And how long does that take you out? Yeah, I, I mean, I can drone on a lot about this, but you want to look at your five-year, what's the governor forecasting, whoever the governor may be, for that year. Look to MMA for some of that stuff, you know, look at the market, see what they're doing. You know, we never anticipated the price, we, I serve on a select board right now and, and I would get off ICMA rules and ethics and all that type of thing, of course. But, you know, our price per ton to put by two minutes down, went from like a buck 75 a foot, lineal foot, to $3.20 a lineal foot. Those are things you have to take into account. Is the price of petroleum going to come down? What does that do to your fleet? You know, your, your fleet work, all of those things go into that five-year forecasting. And you do the best you can and perhaps, you know, you tweak it every year, you know, you tweak it every year to what the current market conditions are.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for letting me go out of order, Mitch.
It's all right. Just a chair, yarmulke.
Tell my wife that, would you please? And my children, and grandchildren. At this time, we would like to give you the opportunity to ask any questions of us that you may have in your mind.
I want to, I did quite an interview on the town on Monday. I made it a point to interview the town as well. I think it's important that you get a feel as a candidate of whether this is going to be a good fit for, for you, for me, as the case may be. Everything that I learned over the past couple of weeks since the first interview, and then prior to that, I did a lot of paper research before the first interview, tells me that I was right. And again, if you ask my wife, she, you're right, she may not agree with that. This fits exactly to where I want to be. The budget's right, the complexity of the community is right. There are some things that I can actually do something new and learn as well. It's not all wrote. You know, I've worked with the MBTA, I didn't mention this, but Born joined the MBTA. Not many towns are jumping on board to get into the MBTA. And we did it in the year that Keolis couldn't get a, couldn't get a train going in the wintertime. That was the winter we joined, okay? Because we saw the long-term benefit development-wise of getting that spur from Middleborough down to Buzzards Bay because the track's already set to go. So, and I was about as popular as a skunk at a garden party getting up in front of town meeting on that. But in the end, it's going to, it's going to do a lot. It's going to do a lot. So backing up, so there's some things like you have air traffic patterns. I know that that was an issue a couple of years ago. I, I remember reading about it and then my, my friend here in town was telling me about it as well. You know, those, I'm, I'm good with working with the large agencies, so that's something that fits what I, I can do. I certainly can run the day-to-day operations in, in this municipality. I don't have any issue with that. I don't know the small p internal politics of what's going on. I'm not going to pretend I know any about that. I was very clear when I met with the department leaders, all I wanted was some factual stuff. I wasn't going to, I didn't want to get into, you know, what you think of this one or what are the issues. I really wanted to know how their operation ran. I've worked with representative town meetings in the past, I'm, I'm good with that. I had a really good relationship with the finance committee in Born, the Warren Committee. We had, we put together a really good capital plan. I talked about that at the last one. I think you need some work on your capital plan here as well. I'm pretty good at, I hire well. Over my tenure there, I had to bring in 14 of the 17 departmental leaders. Most of them are still there, a couple have moved on to bigger and better things, but most of them are still there. And I, you know, you have an accounting position that's key, you've got to get... You've got to get that filled, but you've got to fill it right, as I said earlier. Everything that this town is currently going through, the growth pressures, the diversity pressures, is there going to be a new school? How's Liam Trust actually fall into that? You know, all those types of things, I'm looking forward to being able to tackle. I think I'm pretty good with the select board, depending on the seventeen members that you asked that I had when I was down there. Some will say yeah, some will say no, but that comes with the territory. I try to get you all the same information at the same time, as best as I can, so that there's no one in the dark. The relationship with the chair, no matter who the chair is, is going to be closer, a working relationship than it is with the other members because you put the consent agendas together. I, I don't see anything here that makes me run, I don't want to run away. I'm running toward Milton. I think that I'm going to, again, I'm going to be around for quite a while. I love this stuff and that's, that's the key. I don't want to drone, but I do, you know, one of the things I was really thrilled to hear when I was speaking with the health department, they just bought the software that will interface with the inspections department. That's really important, so when you're doing permits or you're doing inspections and so forth, that there's, there's interaction there. And I think that can be broadened out. You know, you're doing pretty well with your MS4. I checked on that because that's really important. So a lot of the things that I, I have some background in, I think I can do a really good job for you and I want that opportunity.
Thank you very much. And the select board will be meeting on July 27th and agenda has a decision that will be made at that point in time.
One other point I did want to make because I don't want to forget. I've been offered a position a few weeks ago and I opted not to take it to put my focus in here. And that was in Somerset. I could have met the president.
President was there yesterday.
He's got COVID today though, so I'm not too cold to laugh.
Yeah, it just came out.
I put my energies here. I'm hoping that that will bear fruit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please do get back to us if you have any follow-up questions that come to mind.
I sure will and you're, you know, the-
Although the same.
Every, everyone I spoke with in the departments really likes being here and that's, that's something that you should know about. If they don't tell you themselves, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right down the stairs, okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Yes, yes.
Thank you. Welcome, Melissa. It's a pleasure to have you with us today for the interview process. Just to give you a little bit of background, you have some additional reading material to take home with you. If you haven't seen the past town report and the most recent warrant, you've met everybody around the table, some of whom you've met previously during the selection process. And at this time, what we'd like to do is ask you a series of questions. We'll go around with each person asking you two questions in two different cycles. Is that okay?
When are we going to do an opening first? Let's not, when are we allowing her to give a room?
At the end, of course.
No, at the opening, let's sort of do it now at the opening.
Yeah.
Thank you, Richard. And we do want to give you the opportunity to introduce yourself.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me. I'm Melissa Goff. I'm currently the deputy town administrator in Brookline. I've been a big passionate public service person. That's been my entire career, starting out in the city of Boston and then moving my way up through the different levels. And I, you know, I've been in Brookline for about sixteen years now. I've been the deputy for about seven and I feel that I'm ready to step into the town administrator role and I've been doing a lot of great work in Brookline and I'm looking to bring a lot of what I, my skillset and my, my values to Milton to help you accomplish your goals.
Thank you. And after our questioning cycles, we'll be happy to give you an opportunity to ask questions of us. So may I turn to you, Ms. Musso, for the first question?
Sure. What is your perspective on the unique role of a strong town administrator for the town of Milton?
So I, I'm supportive of having a strong town administrator because I think that that really helps to provide clear direction to the management team. You know, I, I think, you know, in Brookline, we're going through a, a questioning of whether or not our form of government is right, you know, whether or not they should convert to a city. I, you know, it's nice to see that you, you do examine your form of government and determine, you know, whether or not it's still meeting the moment and you're evolving as you, as you're growing. And so I think this most recent change is definitely something that is positioning the town well. I am used to the town administrator form of government. That's my, been my primary form throughout my career, so you know, I think I work well with it. I understand the board's role as the policymakers and that I'm, my job is to implement the policy. But then also, you know, I'm a big believer in professional development and staying on top of the trends that are happening in government. And so when, when I see something that, you know, might be well-fit for the town, I'd be bringing it to you for, you know, consideration and implementation.
Thank you.
Great.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here. What concrete and actual steps would you take to break down the silos within town departments and create a leadership plan for the town to work towards with input from the department heads all working together, including your role and the department heads' roles in recruiting and retaining key staff?
Sure. So I would say that the management team is the greatest asset that the town has, so making sure that you're current, you're constantly nurturing it and opening those lines of communication. I think, you know, one of the experiences through COVID that, you know, I really kind of saw shined through is that in a crisis, having those lines of communication already established and having the relationships already there made a lot of things that were really challenging at the time be a little bit easier because everyone kind of dropped their baggage and got to work on, on really kind of figuring out how to, how to meet the crisis. We also just had a major event in town. We had the US Open here and I was speaking to the golf pro after the event was done and I said, you know, what was the best part of the event? And he said, honestly, he said, the best part was seeing the team come together as a unit and how well the event went off because we had been planning and working and communicating. So that's something that I think, you know, just having that culture and making sure that the team is, you know, aware of what everyone else is doing is a really important part of what I would bring to the town as well. It's, it's the way that I'm used to operating. We have department head meetings every other week and then we bring the division heads together once a month. You know, and a lot of times we infuse some professional development into those meetings as well, so I, I would maintain that here as well.
The recruitment and retention piece?
Oh, yes, sure.
It's okay.
No, so I, I would say that we've definitely experienced a lot of turnover and so I understand how painful that is in terms of the, the knowledge that walks out of the door and the pressure that's on the staff that's still here trying to maintain what was already built. You know, I have a lot of institutional knowledge. I, I find myself mentoring new department heads because of all of the information that I have. And, you know, I think it's definitely incumbent on us to make sure that we foster continued growth in staff and then education and training is, is a big priority as well because I think it's a lot of pressure. It's a lot of pressure on the team when it, when the team is not full and then it's a lot of pressure on, you know, the, the leaders that are looking to grow and move on that, you know, worried about what they leave behind. So I, I, that's something I'm definitely tuned into and focused on.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Mr. Dor. Ms. Goff, let me get, make sure I get the question correct. Please describe the role and unique duties for a town administrator in a community in the mid, that is in the midst of changing needs such as in housing and infrastructure and demographic makeup.
Sure. So I think, you know, as the town is growing, you've got a lot of new people that are coming to the table and so a lot of it is really trying to make sure that everyone's at the same level of understanding of the issues in town. And understanding that if the board's priorities are shifting, how is that getting communicated to the community? You know, as, as we have, you know, a housing crisis, there's a lot of pressure with 40Bs and then with this MBTA community issue as well. People need to understand the constraints that the town is facing and then the goals of the town to try and address some of the issues. So I, I see the role of the town administrator as helping to facilitate a lot of that communication and then, you know, the coordination that's needed to, to achieve the goals as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you please describe the most effective ways for a town to communicate with all segments of residents, including informing residents about what town government is doing and what opportunities exist to participate in town government?
Sure. I don't know that there's a perfect way of communicating because I really think that, you know, when you think that you've done a, a job that's well-done, someone will come later in the game and say, I had no idea you were doing any of this. And that's definitely been an experience in a lot of the projects that we've run, school projects where we thought we had a really robust campaign to educate everyone and then, you know, you have to kind of start all at the, at the drawing board. I would say that when you are communicating that you need to make sure that all your messaging is consistent. You know, I think a lot of times you have people that are, you know, putting out social media messages, but then the website is dormant and, you know, making sure that those, those channels are at least telling the same story. And then also when you're, you know, I, we're doing a, a website refresh right now and, you know, one of the changing things that we're looking at is that, you know, the website is easy for someone to navigate when they know what they're looking for and they understand the way the town operates. And a lot of times people don't even know what they're doing. And so intention-based, you know, engagement is definitely something that, you know, would be helpful. I know that in doing my research for the town, I was struggling with some of the, trying to find some of the things that I'm, you know, used to finding in different places. And then also through COVID, we engaged with a firm to help us with communicating. And I think that that was something that really made a huge difference with the way that the town, the town received a lot of our information. So it was more getting in front of a story, putting it out there before, you know, somebody else heard it third party and then it's, the narrative is different and it's not correct and then having to kind of double back and correct that. Prime example of kind of the value of having something like that is we had an issue with DPW where there was an employee accident and it was caught on camera. It was very dramatic. The tractor kind of tipped over and the news was calling our DPW commissioner. She's trying to deal with the emergency, but then getting all of these phone calls and it was really hard. And I said, you know, why don't you call our, our firm? Because that's exactly what they're supposed to do. They're, we brought them in during COVID, but we kept them because it's working so well. And it was just such a relief for her that she could focus on the emergency, get the guidance from the firm to help us figure out how to deal with the inquiries and questions. So I would say this, it's, there's a variety of strategies and I think that, you know, to continue to keep working on it is, is something that, that, because the space keeps changing too, so.
There's a high expectation for public sector leaders to develop, to deliver value to diverse and sometimes competing stakeholders. Could you speak to the delivery and articulation of value, particularly in the presence of available resources, potential risks, and achievable results?
So I think goal-setting is a, is a huge part of the process, kind of starting at the beginning and saying, you know, we, we know we have limited resources, we have a lot that we want to achieve. How do we figure out what the best use of those resources is? And then also, what does it mean when we can't achieve some of the things due to funding? We have very engaged citizens, citizenry on climate work and, you know, we brought somebody in to help with that. We brought, we hired a sustainability director. She really tried to engage with the community, but then became overwhelmed because there was just so much demand and need. And ultimately, she wasn't successful in the position. So that for me was a lesson about like really understanding what the priorities are and how to help staff use that and, and focus on the work that needs to be done based on the priorities that were set. And then in terms of, you know, engaging with different stakeholders, that's another thing too with the climate activists is that there, there's always someone new moving in town. They want to make a difference, they want to make an impact. I had someone come into town hall the other day and say, you know, I'm really concerned about vehicles that are idling and how do I get in front of this? And I, you know, he kind of got bounced around the building a little bit and ended up in my office. And I said, okay, well, I know the climate, the climate, the sustainability director, here's his contact information, but you should go to the board and commission meeting where they're actually talking about this work because you should understand what we're doing already and then maybe, you know, you could help them achieve some of the goals that they're already working on, so.
Thank you. Ms. Musso.
Okay. Describe your experience dealing with town meeting and the warrant process.
Very extensive, I would say. This is a very tiny warrant for me. Our warrant is about this thick. Yeah, we have, we have very, very large town meeting document. We have town meeting twice a year. We do mostly zoning in the fall, but now it's kind of grown to be a little bit more than that. We have what we call, in addition to the warrant being filed, we have what's called the combined reports, which essentially is recommendations from both the select board and the advisory committee. Our, the advisory committee is our finance committee. And so I compile all of that. All of the, all the information that goes into that book, the select board recommendations, I'm, you know, I'm writing the select board recommendations, I'm coordinating with the advisory committee. I'm also kind of going back and forth between the board and the advisory committee because we try and align our votes. So to the extent that we can do that, I'm kind of shuttling between both groups. And at the end of it, we put together a rather large document for town meeting members to digest and then that helps inform the debate as they go into town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Our town is a rich and diverse community. However, that is not represented in town leadership or outwardly facing in our town. We have a long way to go on both DEI and class issues and acceptance of those in our town. What concrete steps would you take to improve our DEI and class issues we have and what is your experience in improving these issues in other sectors?
Sure. Obviously, that's a goal of a lot of communities.
Right.
You know, I think that's, it's something that, you know, a lot of people will hire a DEI officer and say, okay, we've done it, but it's something that needs to be across the organization, the responsibility of everyone in, in the organization. You know, I think we've definitely seen a change in the building in terms of the hiring and kind of the recruiting, but I think also the, the retention of people that come that, you know, are different and want to feel comfortable working in town hall, kind of having training so that we make sure that we're, you know, educating people on, you know, maybe some of the blind spots that they have. And then also kind of making sure that, you know, if there are things that we need to do to engage and make people feel more comfortable that we're doing that. Another thing that we are also doing is with board and commission recruitment, kind of making sure that we understand what the population is and kind of where, where we need to kind of, you know, recruit and, and bring different voices to the table as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Ms. Zulus.
Thank you. Could you describe some projects on which you worked collaboratively with the community that were successful?
Sure. We've had a lot of capital projects in Brookline that have been really great to work on. We, we had a most recent ribbon cutting at our high school. That was a really fun project. It was a very complicated project. We, we have, you know, obviously you're experiencing enrollment growth in Brookline also, you know, when I first started, we were kind of right in the thrust of it. And so we have renovated and expanded almost all of our, our school buildings and we were, that, that bulge was about to present itself in the high school, so we knew we had to do something. We also, there was a parcel that was pretty close to the high school campus that would have been really well positioned if we were able to acquire it. So we ended up actually taking it by eminent domain and then building a rather large building that then went over the T-tracks. And so that was extremely complicated. Working with the T is not easy.
You're talking air rights.
Yes, air rights. But I think that, you know, the, the benefit for them is that we renovated the train station. That was, you know, that was kind of the exchange. And a very complicated project, a lot of delays, delays mostly because of the diversions that are required and we were trying to kind of pony on some existing track work that was done. And we were trying to kind of pony on some existing track work that was done. Our building project team was phenomenal. They were just so, you know, just really committed to making the project work well. We had, you know, three members of our community that served as co-chair, one from the board, one from the schools, and then one from the building commission. And they were just laser-focused on the work. It was so great to see. And the, the building is beautiful. And the project's not done yet, we're still working on the playground area and the, the fields. But it's, it's pretty impressive, it's, it's really nice.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's, uh, I'm gonna give you a two-part question. There's only one in this series, unlike the last series of, like, your last interview. Milton is constrained with large, a large residential base and a smaller commercial base, and has limited financial resources to go around. What process, what process would you use when developing your budget, understanding this? And then the second part is, could you explain in your, in your budget development thoughts, how developing a five-year financial plan would play into your role as town administrator?
Sure. Very similar circumstance that I'm kind of working in currently in terms of, you know, high residential and low commercial. You know, we put out a five-year forecast, we usually start our budget process. And I've actually already kicked off our capital improvement, uh, process. We'll have those requests back in September, and then in September, we send out the operating budget. What we typically do is kind of ask departments to put together a maintenance of effort. And then we also look at, um, kind of what their expansion requests are in terms of, if there was additional funding, where would that money go? And then, in terms of the forecast, we would look at our revenue projection. I usually have a meeting with our, um, finance director, with our, um, economic development director, to the extent that we do have any kind of new growth that might be coming in that we can, you know, use as part of the revenue. And then we also have the town administrator, the, uh, the assistant town administrator, looking at expenditures and, and kind of projecting that over the five years. And then we're, you know, in December, we kind of give the board a picture of, "Okay, here's where we're at. We have some tough choices that we need to make, we need to set some parameters around collective bargaining." And then we have to, you know, basically take that direction and use it to build the budget. And so, um, you know, the easy choices are easy, and then the hard choices are really something that we bring the department heads in front of the town administrator to kind of make their pitch for the limited revenue that is available. And then, um, we go from there. I think that we also engage with the school department, because they're a huge piece of this as well. In Brookline, we have a, a revenue allocation formula that's been in place for over 20 years, where there is certain assumptions about, um, the share of revenue that goes to town and school. We're currently looking and revisiting that, and trying to figure out whether or not it needs some adjustment, adjustment, because there's definitely been a lot of pressure. You know, we're also looking at an override, and so what does that mean? So that, that's the budget process that I'm kind of used to, uh, working through.
Mr. Fox, Mr. Chair, when was the last time Brookline had an override, an operational override?
They had one in 2019. And then they, um, they're planning for one next year.
Operational?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're very welcome.
Override is a part of our world here, that's why I wanted to ask.
Part of our world as well.
On the last question, um, about the override, does that planning process anticipate overrides every so many years?
So, we have been on a three-year cycle, um, but COVID disrupted that because of the enrollment growth, I mean, that was kind of what we had looked at. But when we do them, we do them with a, a combination of tax revenue, but then any other revenue enhancements like, that we might have, like, an increase in the tax, trash fee, an increase in the meter rates. And so, we, we tend to, um, kind of have it as multiple sources to sustain, sustain itself over three-year cycles. COVID disrupted that, and then we also, you know, we have a lot of pressure around, a change in enrollment, and whether or not that will be the new normal, or whether or not we need to do some resetting. And so that's kind of the debate that's, that's currently underway.
Thank you for that elaboration.
No problem.
There's always an unforeseen issue of significance out there somewhere, right around the corner, that's going to impact the community. How do you advise anticipating, identifying, and addressing those instances? And at the same time, how would you do the same with beneficial opportunities that would face the community?
Sure. I would probably use, uh, an example of when we brought marijuana to Brookline. So we were one of the first communities to implement, um, the zoning required to have marijuana shops. We were one of the first shops to open. And we, when we first opened as a medical, uh, it went very well. It was very easy, um, very smooth. And the community chose to really go all in with the recreational aspect of it. And knowing that it would be a, a good revenue source for the town, and then also, you know, some, another area where it could provide some relief to the budget. What we didn't anticipate was that we would be the only game in town for quite a long time. And the demand that came with that, and the impact on the community with that. And, you know, everyone came to the meetings every week, and, you know, really, really upset about what was happening in terms of the lines, and the trash, and the parking, and, uh, it was really intense. And, you know, we had to figure out how to, how to best mitigate it. Fortunately, we had revenue that we could use to mitigate it. And so a lot of our host community agreement funds are spent on public works, on police department. And then, um, now we're kind of shifting away from that. As other shops have opened, it's, the use is less intense. And we are now looking at kind of, okay, what in the public health realm do we want to do with this money to really understand what the impact of it is? And I also provide staff support for the cannabis mitigation advisory committee, which we created to help oversee some of the impacts. We have representatives from the neighborhood on that committee, so that we can always make sure that we're meeting, you know, we meet monthly and really understand. The police department comes to those meetings, uh, DP, the departments come, and so we really are on top of, um, you know, what kind of came up on us fast is a really, uh, large issue in town.
Just one location?
So we have, now we have, we have four licenses. We had, initially had one.
Beautiful building, the first one's a, it's a bank. It's gorgeous.
It's really beautiful. And then we also are expanding to delivery options as well. And, you know, that's, that's, so that's coming down the way as well.
But lots of revenue from that.
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you very much. And as you probably know, the next meeting of the select board is going to be on July 27. And it will be at that meeting that the board is scheduled to make a decision on a town administrator. At this time, I want to go back to the invitation to give you an opportunity to ask questions that you have on your mind for the select board members.
Sure. So I would say that, you know, go, I'm gonna be going from having a lot of institutional knowledge to having not very much, um, which I think is exciting, because I think, you know, the past two communities that I've worked in, I've kind of worked my way up. So who is that person here that is the, the knowledge, uh, person that will still be on staff? You know, I know, I, I'm not, I know Anne Marie is here, but I'm not counting on her for, you know, understanding the way the town operates. But I just want to know, in terms of your management team, you know, are they, are there, are the department heads fairly new? Are they, um, you know, are they long-tenured? And what, what can I expect in terms of potential turnover? Just try to understand how seasoned the team is.
So, can I, I'll, I'll take a stab at it, again, since that's where I came from.
Yeah.
So you have some really, really veteran, though, I'm gonna just, one of the champs on me is Bill Ritchie, director of consolidating facilities, as far as institutional.
Joe Prondak. I'd say that.
Chase Berkeley, who's probably in about his 50, I don't know about his depth, but came from the city, he's probably one of the most knowledgeable people about water and sewer, because he came from Boston Water and Sewer, he was one of the bosses there. Well, we'll have him check on libraries. Police for hundreds of semesters, pretty new. The police chief's in his 50, and the fire chief is in second, Chris, in his second year. Second, well, second year, chief man is second. I mean, there's...
There's some other veterans though, like Joe Prondak.
Oh yeah, Joe Prondak, inspection services, has been here a long time. Carolyn Consala has been here quite a, quite a long time, the director, the al director. There, there's definitely some, you're, you're leaning more towards some institutional knowledge versus non-institutional.
If I mentioned, certainly our town clerk.
Yeah, Sue Galvin as well. In this building here, there's a lot of, there's a lot of. I mean, you have a new assessor, Bob Bushway, who's retired. Other treasurer's been here for 15 years, Jim McGowan.
Other responses to?
Just, just that we still don't have a financial, so you know that, okay?
Yeah, we don't have one either.
Okay.
I'm tired of recruiting. You know, that's an area that's really tough to hire, and, you know. Well, we had him in acting, we actually, our former finance director left a year ago. She, she went, she moved to Iran. She was phenomenal. And I sorely miss her, but I, I, that's why I know how hard it is to fill, because we filled it twice within a short time span, so.
Interesting.
I would say that we are relying on Anne Marie too.
Right.
I was trying to let you off the hook, but you're like, just like, we go way back, many years on, of rubber meets the road.
I am here to help.
That was a very good question, Melissa, any others that you have in mind?
Um, I'm curious about, um, how you feel the change from the three to five-member board is, like, how, how it's different, you know, pluses and minuses, if, if there's any feedback you want to give on that? I'm used to working with a five-member board, so, um, you know.
The only one.
Mike and Mitch, and you might be the best two to, uh...
He wasn't on it, only I was.
On the three-member board?
That's right.
I was the first, I was among, I was the first five, I was the first five member.
It's a lot more work with five, and I, I can't believe I say this.
Really?
Twice as much work. I don't, and I, three was a breeze. I hate to say, like, people ask me, like, we've talked about this, three was a breeze. I mean, the biggest thing that I say, and I, I would say this to you if you get the job, is I'm a big, don't call me, I won't call you unless you need me, and I'll call you. Like, I understand being a, like, how big this job is, and have, to talk to five people a day, there's like, you'll never get anything done, so it's like, do the job. That, that was the whole goal of creating the strong town administrator. I mean, no one knows more than Emery, she, Emery Stone worked her way all the way up from studying as administrative staff to become the first strong town administrator. It's like, so that's just, if I were to do it all over again, truthfully, not, not, not against the people here, but as far as the work part of it, I would stay with the three. It did, it didn't seem like a big deal to me at the time, but it's an immense amount of work compared to... This is more, to me, being police chief for 10 years was easy compared to this job. It really was, like, this, this is a vanity job, people don't know about it, it is. Everyone here knows, like, people aren't afraid of knocking your door, calling you, this, that, email you, like, just...
Any other comments?
I like the five-person board, thank you so much. I think it allows, no, I think it allows for more diverse voices at our table instead of the, you know, three voices that may not represent all sectors of the town. So I think that it's a really good thing.
More women, or is it a three-person board?
Yeah, but I'm, how many gay people did you have?
I don't know.
None.
You don't know that?
Out and open, out and open.
All right, I'll give you that one.
Thank you.
I also think we have more committees. I mean, I think the one thing, just from sitting back, I think that when we had three members, we did not have as many committees. And so, now that you have all of these committees, it's a lot. And it's a lot for the new person who comes into this role, um, to be involved with all of the committees. So I, I think, to your point, I think there, there were some advantages to having a smaller board. There weren't as many committees and the commitment. So it's, it's a lot more of a commitment from all of us as well.
Yes.
And a new TA as well.
And I would add to that point from my observation, now in my third year, is that it would be well worth the new town administrator taking a look at how well we're resourced to function with the paradigm that we have at hand now. Are we resourcing it with the model that we had for a three-member board versus what the town really needs? Not us, but what the town needs to service a five-member board?
Excellent point, Mr. Chair.
And, and, you know, um, to that point, um, it's hard to say, I think, why there may be more work with five than there were with three. It could be a function, there could be a lot of different variables, could be a function of the personalities, could be a function of the times. You know, when, when we started the five-member board, we did put things into committees, that was when we started that. And to kind of laser-focus on certain things, and then feed it up to the board, so not everyone would be, you know, so the board wouldn't have unending meetings. I don't know if that's been successful or not. But I think we have, with that structure, had laser-focus on certain issues. And I think we've been able to do that. So, um, why, why we have, why there's more work than there is three? You know, there could be a lot of different reasons for that.
You're right, because when I think about, like, I look at our agenda, how much work there is, and then I think back to days of when it was the, you know, the weak town administrator. This board, interviewed, every police came, every fire guy, every number of people coming to this. Police, I mean, there was, you'd have so, we don't do any of that anymore. Yet our meetings are late.
Yes.
I mean, that as well.
Yes.
Our job, our job, there's a four-pack now than there were then, and we don't do any of that. Which is kind of, I said, and made me think of that when I came in here today, because as I think about how many people also walk through the store, myself included. I mean, this is, I began my police career in this room.
Melissa, how long has Brookline had a five-member board?
Um, I think that they've, they've had it for, I mean, I've been there for 16 years, and then before that, I think that's always been how large the boards. Our meetings are every single week, and they're all very long, very long.
The select board meets every week?
Every week.
Oh, I would die.
Sometimes we'll start at four, five o'clock, we'll go to 11:00.
I realize that this is your opportunity to ask questions of us, but I do have one more for you that I'd like to, um, present. And that is, during your career, how have you seen municipal government change, expand, et cetera? What's the transformation experience that you've witnessed?
Sure, I, I think that, you know, the beginning of my career, working in a city with a mayor, that was a very interesting experience, and that all the politics were inside the building, where the, everyone was trying to get the mayor's attention. And I think that a lot of my communication style is formed from that experience, and making sure that my boss is aware of what's going on, because everybody's kind of, you know, making these end runs and pitching all these things. And so Mel and I are very closely aligned. You know, if I talk to a board member, he knows about it, um, you know.
Knows the town administrator.
He's the town administrator in Brookline. And then also, I think that, you know, he and I also, because of that communication, we, um, I can anticipate what he's gonna react to on a proposal, which I'm expecting to have that same level with the board here. As, as I get to know you, I can understand, um, what your priorities are and what you are, um, in tuned with on certain issues. So it was kind of interesting going from that form of government into a town where the politics are mostly outside the building. The management team is all, you know, very tightly, um, together and, and working on the issues. And, uh, kind of experiencing that. And then also, I've seen a lot of turnover in the members of the government as well. So, you know, we have a 30-member, uh, finance committee. And for, at the beginning of my career, it was, you know, the same people that have been doing the work for a very long period of time. And now that's changing over, where we've got a lot of new members, it requires a lot of re-education. And we are also, you know, just engaging new members in the community on the way that the town works. So, um, we do a budget 101 forum, which is essentially really, um, you know, low-level, um, understanding of the budget, so that people that want to understand don't have to, like, try and figure out what we're talking about. When we talk about OPEB's and all other concepts, and free cash and things like that. So, um, the level engagement has definitely increased, which I think is also why the warrant is so large, because people feel more empowered to get things done at the local level. Because, you know, you really can achieve some great things when you, when you work here at the local level.
One thing that you mentioned in your first interview that you didn't touch on today is where you went to school.
Sure. I went to Fumpon Academy. So I'm, you know, Milton is definitely a community that I've had my eye on for a while. My parents live in Reedville, my sisters live in Canton. This kind of fits really well, so I can see them more frequently. So, you know, that's another, that's another reason why Milton's so appealing to me.
Do you have any other questions to ask of us?
At this point, I think I'm, I'm, you know, this has been a really good meeting, and it's great to get to know all of you. I'm really excited about the possibility of working here, and I really thank you for, for having me here.
Thank you, and if you have any other questions after the meeting, please. Exactly.
Thank you so much, it was great meeting you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Will you join, Mr. Chair?
Pretty close. Our next item is discussion of candidates for town administrator. The first thing I want to say is kudos to the screening committee, two members of which are here among us. I think the candidates that we interviewed today are a very good reflection of the high quality of work that was done by the screening committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know all the committee members, especially Glenn, who kept us all in check.
Are there any follow-up comments or questions at this time or procedures that need to be followed? Anybody has a mind?
Will you go on it right away for us on the agenda or how do you want to do this?
Yes, it's on your July 27th agenda. I think it's number four.
Right.
It's the very first item after Citizens Speak.
So have we thought about a process for this? Is it, I mean, is it going to be, we, well, have we thought about a process for this? There's a, it seems to me there's a few different ways we could go in terms of that.
That's exactly why I mentioned process and wanted to know what it is that you would like to recommend to be followed at that time.
I thought back to the last process. Were you, were you still, are you still on your?
No, I was here.
You were here that night, right?
Yes, I was here, yes.
Anne Marie, what's been the process in the past?
What has happened in the past is you will make your recommendation on the 27th after your discussion. You'll make a recommendation subject to successful contract negotiations and then the board will, it's usually the chair that handles those negotiations in conjunction with the .
I was actually thinking about the process for our meeting.
Us, yeah.
For our meeting. Are we going to have ranked choice voting?
Right.
Are we going to just, you know, just go around the table?
Ballots or are we going to raise hands? What are we doing?
I don't think we could do ballots on a public, I don't.
I agree with you.
I think in the past, you've, you've spoken about each, each one of you have spoken about the three different candidates and, and then you chose, you made your decision and spoke to the reasons why you made that decision for that particular candidate.
And then had a vote.
And then had a vote.
And then do you revote so that it's unanimous?
They did that last time.
Can we please make that happen again?
They did that last time.
That's a smart move.
Thank you.
Well, it's subject to the members wanting to do that, you know.
Yeah, but it's.
I, I agree with Aaron. I think, I mean, it only makes sense in the end that they had it that last time.
Yes, we did.
So to be clear, each member will give his or her reasons why they favor a particular candidate. And then there'll be a determination as to which of those candidates has the highest number of recommendations. And then that being acceptable, there would be a vote for unanimity.
We don't want this to be a conclave, Mr. Chair.
That's right. No white smoke. Hey, we're all together, huh? Anything else?
I'm really torn.
We have received a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Masto. All a favor?
Hi.
Great job. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Arthur.
And thanks to Milton Access TV and to our town administrator.
Thanks, Elaine, for giving us some warning.
Yes. She just wanted to spend time with us.